Good afternoon and welcome. We're, five of us here today, although it may not appear that way. Commissioner Ananda is on the phone over there by Porter, so we may hear from her occasionally. She's out of town, but she's with us in the meeting. We have no proclamations on our agenda, but I'm going to start our meeting with a personal statement. As an elected official, and especially as mayor, I have not only the opportunity, but also the obligation to speak on behalf of our community. So while these remarks are mine, I speak to you as the mayor of the City of Lawrence. Separating children from their parents as government policy is wrong. Bishop Daniel Flores of Brownsville, Texas, said, "Separating immigrant parents and children as a supposed deterrent to immigration is a cruel and reprehensible policy. Children are not instruments of deterrence, they are children." A government that thinks any means is suitable to achieve an end cannot secure justice for Former First Lady Laura Bush said, "I live in a border state. I appreciate the need to enforce and protect our international boundaries, but this zero tolerance policy is cruel. It is immoral, and it breaks my heart." Former First Lady Rosalynn Carter said, "The practice and policy today of removing children from their parents' care at our border with Mexico is disgraceful and a shame to our country." We've come a long way from honoring the concept embodied by the Statue of Liberty, as interpreted by Emma Lazarus in her poem, "The New Colossus." "Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these, the homeless, tempests tossed to me, I lift my lamp beside the golden door." Lest anyone think that this is a partisan issue, we should consider the comments of current Republican Representative Mia Love of Utah. She said, "As a mother of three children and daughter of immigrant parents, this is something that's both very tangible and heartbreaking to me. This is not a partisan issue, it's an issue of right or wrong. As your mayor, I urge you to contact our congressional delegation to demand that the federal government stop the immoral practice of separating children from their parents as a deterrent to immigration. We must take action to end this abuse of innocent children." We'll now move on to our consent agenda. All matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that's been pulled off of the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comment, and I will remind you that we have a clock right here, you can watch for your three minutes. Are there any issues on the consent agenda that a member of the commission would like to remove for consideration? Any others? Can we get a check-in from Commissioner Ananda on that?
I have no item.
Thank you. Are there any issues that a member of the public would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Number seven.
About ready to say bingo. Is that it? Okay. So we are talking about removing 5A, 6, 7, and 15 from the consent agenda, and we'd also, on number three's claims.
I would make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda as listed, plus claims, minus items 5A, 6, 7, and 15.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Herbert, second from Commissioner Larson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. We'll go to 5A.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Katie Walsh, 732 Rhode Island. We are, of course, very pleased that the East Ninth Street rebuild project is going forward, but I just have a couple of questions. There was a note in the staff report about St. Luke Church and some changes that may be made before, if they get a design in before the end of July or June. It's just not clear to us. We weren't notified as a neighborhood association, and so it's just, my question is about process, will it then have to go back to the planning commission, the HRC, et cetera? My second question is on the winning bid, Paver Incorporated. There was no line item for either salvaging and storing the limestone curbs, the ones that could be saved, and salvaging and storing the bricks under the street, and these were promised and were line items in the original budget that the Public Works Department has been working with, so we're wondering why those historic things are missing.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dave Cronin, City Engineer. In regards to the question regarding the St. Luke AME Church, we, staff met with them recently, they've recently engaged an architect to look at potentially modifying their entrance on the northeast side of the building to be an ADA compliant entrance, basically into their basement. And depending on the timeline of them to be able to secure funding or plans to do that, I mean, if they were to accelerate that process here in the next few months, we would be able to make some minor modifications to our public improvement plans to tie that in better within the right of way, and if it takes longer than us completing this project going into next year, they would be able to tie into our project with minimal reconstruction in the right of way of where we're putting the sidewalk in. So I think this is kind of something that came up here just this spring, as far as them looking at a capital project to do some improvements to their building. Met with them recently here, as of a couple of weeks ago with planning staff as well, and let them know kind of the timeline of our project, and then if they do, secure some plans and funding, then we could work with them, so.
It doesn't sound like our project would need to go back for any further reviews.
I don't believe it would. Not our project. In regards to the question on the, on the brick sidewalk and stone curb, I don't have the bid items with me. We noted in the plans that the, that the stone curb would be salvaged, marked, and stored at our street department, that we, that we marked for East Lawrence Neighborhood Curve, so it would be salvaged, and any, any historic curb that's salvageable would, would remain in our street division yard for future maintenance projects to, you know, if we do a trenching project, we need a small piece to tie back in. So we won't know the extent of what curb is reusable until we dig it out. A lot of it, from what we see at the surface, is pretty deteriorated, and sometimes you don't really know the condition until you dig down, because they're about two foot in length. So I know we do have that note in the plans, it may not be a specific bid item, but it's noted in the plan, so it would be subsidiary to other work.
And what about the brick?
The brick, I think that is in there as well. We're redoing the brick sidewalks with brick sidewalks, and again, I, I don't have the plans and the bid items, but when we do these reconstruction projects and there is brick, the contractor is directed to salvage the brick and deliver it to the city stockyard, and that'd be consistent with other public improvement projects like this that we've done.
Okay. Thank you, David. Questions for David? Public comment? Public comment?
So Katie Walsh again. So my question was not about the sidewalks, because we feel confident that everybody gets that we're going to save the brick sidewalks. It's the bricks that they will find under the street when they start tearing it up, and those were the ones that aren't in the bid, and we definitely want those saved.
Yeah, the street brick will be salvaged.
Okay. Right. Other public comment? Okay, back to the commission. We are on 5A, which is awarding a bid. I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we award the bid, number B-1832, for East Ninth Street, New Hampshire Street, Pennsylvania Street, street sidewalk and storm sewer construction to Pavers, Inc., in an amount of $2,79,114.30.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Larson, second from Commissioner Herbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. Number six, Commissioner.
Yeah, I wanted to, to talk about this just a little bit. This is in regards to changing the Parks and Recs Board, increasing the number of the members from, they've recommended from five to seven, then also changing their meeting times to a Monday evening, the second Monday of the month, at 5:30 here at City Hall. So I'm really glad to see this, I'm glad to see all the work that Parks and Recs has done on this, the board. I would like to have us consider one change to this, is I would like to see the members go to nine versus seven, but still, obviously, keep it in the evening time. I think that this is a, the Parks and Recs is such an important department within our city functions, that I think it would warrant having more members in order to make sure we get a good cross-section of the community.
Well, the Parks and Recs budget is significant, and if you look at the minutes from their meetings over the last year or so, they have kind of struggled to get public to the meetings and involved in the meetings, so I think it's probably a good idea to go ahead and bump it up, so we get more people on there.
Yeah, I just think it would just allow us to get a better cross-section of folks on the board too, and more voices.
Questions for Vice Mayor Larson from the commission? Okay, public comment on this issue?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. My name's William McCaw, I live in Prairie Park neighborhood. I would have to agree with Ms. Larson and Mr. Boily on this. My past experience with another board has shown that often we get very entrenched people in these boards, and they stay for a very, very long time, despite other people seeking the opportunity to serve on these boards, and I agree that expanding those boards is probably a good idea, so we could have a better cross-section of the members of the public who wish to serve this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other public comment? Okay, let's bring it back to the commission. We're looking at item number six, which is adopting on first reading ordinance number 9510. I'd entertain a motion.
Well, are you wanting the committee to discuss this, the advisory board, or do you just want to do it now?
I think I'd like to go ahead and just do this.
Do you want the additional seats to be dedicated to certain types of people?
No, I hadn't really thought, considered that, actually. I would, yeah, I hadn't really thought about that, Leslie.
I think the public would be...
Yeah. Just the general public.
Yeah.
Well, if we're wanting to ensure perhaps diverse voices, then sometimes having dedicated seats, you know, if you're concerned that perhaps disabled people aren't having enough of voice, then we can dedicate one of those seats to someone. Perhaps it might be a good idea to send it back, and they can discuss. Or we could do this change, and go ahead and do this one, and then ask them to think about two more.
You know, the other thing is, I'm reminded of something Tom Marcus said to us our last meeting, we were talking about trying to adopt specific language relating to diversity, and ultimately, he made a comment, which I thought was relatively spot-on, that ultimately, you can make as much language and ordinance as you want, but we have the power to effect the sort of change we want to see right here without an ordinance. And so if, if it's our opinion, for instance, that individuals with limited mobility aren't being heard with Parks and Recs policy, I don't know that we need language specifically in ordinance number 9510 addressing that, so much as we just need to see to it that an individual gets placed there, you know, somebody from Independence, Inc., or whatever it might be. So, you know, sometimes I think we, we spend a lot of time writing language for things that we could just as easily and quickly take care of right here at this desk.
I agree, Matthew.
So.
And I think it also, that would just show how committed we are as commissioners to making, ensuring diversity is on our boards, versus how to be dictated as to how we do that.
Yeah, but we're not always going to be here either.
True.
That's a good thing.
We may be dedicated, we may be dedicated to diversity, but there's no insurance that the next commission, or 10 years from now, has to be dedicated.
I see that as a community value. I have confidence in Lawrence. I really do.
And ultimately, the next commission could have the ability to change any ordinance we make, we can't tie anybody's hands on this, so.
Yeah. Well, we have a, I don't want to cut off discussion if you want to continue, but we have a pretty full evening, and we're on the consent agenda, so I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to adopt on first reading ordinance number 9510, increasing the number of appointed members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from five members to nine members, and reducing the appointment from four-year terms to three-year terms, and repealing existing section 15-202.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Vice Mayor Larson, second from Commissioner Herbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you.
No, it's not.
Oh, I'm sorry, all opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
I want the record, I want the record to show that I feel that these kind of decisions should be sent back to advisory boards for discussion, rather than spur of the minute.
So that was 4-1. Number seven, Mr. Boyle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. My name's Ted Boyle, North Lawrence Improvement, and we would like Lincoln Street to be removed as a major or main traffic way. I know a few of you have probably been on Lincoln Street, Lincoln Street, from Third Street to Fifth Street is 16 feet wide, open ditches on both sides. From Fifth Street to Seventh Street, it's 18 feet wide, with open ditches on both sides. Now, my understanding is that putting this street, these streets on here, will enable the city to get more money. Well, there's nothing you can do to Lincoln Street to make it any better than it is right now, so Lincoln Street, you're using it as a pawn to get more money to be spent on other streets. And what this will do, being a major or a main traffic way, and we've just got the speed limit lowered to 25 mile an hour, and a stop sign installed at Fifth Street and Lincoln, and slated for four traffic calming devices on that road from Third Street to Seventh Street. And so the residents and the North Lawrence Improvement Association, this designation will come back to bite us years down the road, and so the residents of the North Lawrence Improvement Association want Lincoln Street removed from this criteria.
It's my understanding that the reason to do this is to be able to borrow money to do the improvements, which are the speed humps on Lincoln Street.
That, now, that, and, we can get into this...
We can hear from staff to see whether that's accurate or not.
We can get...
So we were going to borrow the money to put the speed humps in, Ted, that's what we have to do to be able to issue the bonds.
Now, that's not what I was told, and the residents on Lincoln Street were told. You know, we get traffic calming devices every year. I had applied for four of them for CDBG money. The city had jumped in ahead, the new traffic engineer had jumped in and got four of them, and said that they were going to use that $200,000 back rent that y'all collected from, that's what she told the residents and me, so don't be saying she didn't tell us that.
I didn't say that, I just said that's not what we're going to do.
Well, I know, but using us to do that, there's nothing else you can do. I just got $40,000 for five more traffic calming devices on Lyon Street. Four of those were proposed for Lincoln Street, but the city jumped in there last year in November and said, "Oh, we'll take care of that." That's, that's $32,000, because the traffic calming devices were $3,000 apiece, and then City Hall said, "Oh, we want to get paid for installing them." So that jumped it up to $8,000 per traffic calming device. So I contacted CDBG Danny and said, "Ted, there's no cap on that, so we'll be able to handle that for you." And so I applied for four of them, they gave us five. That was $40,000 that you're going to get paid to install those.
Let's check in with staff about what the purpose of having this in number seven.
Well, we don't want this designation.
Well, I mean, let's, let's check in with staff, Ted, and here...
Well, let's defer it, then, and let's bring it up on the regular agenda. That's what, that's what I want.
Actually, we're going to have staff comment, Ted.
Well...
So, thank you.
I'll be back.
I will, too.
Dave Cronin again. So in regards to the main trafficway ordinance, that's correct, on that question, to issue the debt, we need to, to issue the debt to do these traffic calming projects, we need to designate it a main thoroughfare or trafficway. So in regards to the Lincoln project, this got added to the list last year in 2017, so I'm not disfeeling that it's been applied for, for CDBG in the past, or that there have been funds that may have been obtained or applied for, but it has been added to the list, and it does rank as the number five project, and so as we go through this year's projects with allocating that, that funding, it, it met the requirements, and it was ranked high enough to be eligible to be funded here this year. Any, if there are other traffic calming projects or speed humps that have been applied through CDBG prior to this year, we would ask that those go through the Transportation Commission, that we follow the process. As you know, we have a moratorium on traffic calming currently, and there's a report on the city manager tonight, an update on that, but if it's been a previous year, because I think I'm aware now that there's at least two that have previously been funded in 2017 through CDBG, so we would ask that we go through our older process, since those are already funded, to get traffic data, see if it met the requirements, and notify neighbors and, and see if it met our traffic calming policy before we put them in. And then any other future CDBG requests for traffic calming in neighborhoods should be, should also go through the Transportation Commission, and so for this year, any years forward, any of those requests should go through the Transportation Commission and the ranking system, wherever that lands after we revise the policy. So that would be our recommendation.
So, to clarify, the purpose for including Lincoln Street in this ordinance, designating it as a major or main trafficway, is to obtain the funding to put in the traffic calming?
Correct.
Is there any other reason to do it?
No.
Okay, thank you. Ted, I don't know if that addresses your concerns?
Well, here's the deal. The two traffic calming devices, we applied for them in 2016. They were supposed to be installed in 2017. The traffic calming devices, the four that I applied for in 2017, is designated area already approved by the city, by the traffic engineer, on Lyon Street from 7th to 900 block. Those people have been waiting four years for those traffic calming devices. So that's why we put the other four on Lyon Street, because that was the recommendation of the new traffic engineer. So, you know, here's the deal. We get the money for y'all to put those in, safety devices. North Lawrence got the highest walkability safe routes of the city from the Health Department, and it was because of those traffic calming devices. It wasn't because of the sidewalks, because we got the least amount of sidewalks in the city. So, you know, we go and get the money for you to do it, and then all of a sudden, we hit a block wall, and we never had this problem until October of last year.
So the question is, Ted, do you want Lincoln Street to be designated as a major trafficway to be able to get this speed?
No, no, we don't, no.
Okay.
We don't want, we don't want it major trafficway. Absolutely not.
Okay.
All the city's got to do, I'll get you the money.
No, I just, I just asked the question.
I'm answering.
Okay. Other questions on this topic? Not public comment, yet I'm asking Commissioners, any other questions on this topic? For staff, or for Ted?
So the only reason they want to, we want to designate this street that way is to get the funding to do traffic calming. But I, I thought I understood Ted to say that he already had the money, they already had the money for it. Is that not true? I don't know.
Show me the money.
I don't know, you know, I, that's Ted saying.
I can show you the money. I've been up here with CDBG, I got the money, I got $40,000 from the CDBG just this last spring, from a request last fall, and the other two traffic calming devices that I applied for in 2016, the money's sitting there. So, and, you know, they got raised from $3,000 a traffic calming device to $8,000, because the city wanted to get paid labor and equipment expenses. So went back to CDBG, got the extra $5,000 for the city to pay them at the request of the fourth floor, and that's what I was told. And then the new traffic engineer states that, "Oh, those four that are going to be on Lincoln Street, we got that extra $200,000 that y'all collected here a couple of months ago or something on back print or something like that," and she told me that some of that money was going to be used for the traffic calming devices on Lincoln Street, and that's what she told a resident at 308 Lincoln, and that's the truth. So, "Show me the money. I'll show you the money."
You told me the money, you didn't show me the money, Ted.
It's sitting down there in CDBG.
Is it there? Is the money there?
They already approved it.
Has it been approved?
We'll have to check tomorrow.
I don't, I don't have record of that, we'll have to check with Danielle over in this Development Services Division.
And then there was some money supposedly for two other traffic calming that was approved, and...
Well, actually, the question on our, on our agenda here is, do we want to keep, can we delete Lincoln Street from this?
Defer it.
And go ahead and pass?
Sure.
Minus Lincoln Street?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, that's one way to deal with this.
Yeah, I think, I think, I'd like to hear a street.
Okay.
And we'll get more information...
If the money is not there through CDBG, we'll have to come back if you want to still proceed with the speed hump.
We'll come back regardless, we will tell you where the money is or isn't.
But I don't want to hold these other projects.
No, I don't think we should, yeah. We should continue with...
Okay. So, we've had our questions, now we'll open it up to public... Okay. So, we've had our questions. Now we'll open it up to public comment.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers, and I was looking into this, and I thought the purpose of major and main roadways was to collect through traffic. So why are we use, like, why are we upgrading streets just for money? Like, where does it say that's part of the purpose of a main or major roadway to collect money to build?
So, without trying to quote an attorney, which will only get me in trouble, the statute, so there's, there's only certain ways you can issue debt to finance public streets. And you can do it through special assessment, or you can do it as a general obligation bond. And in order to do a general obligation bond, you're, you're basically asking the entire city to, to obligate their future taxes, if you will, to make a payment in a certain area that maybe they're not living in. And so what the main trafficway does is give notice to all the citizens that, hey, we're going to make some, some improvements to a street in this location. The commission or the governing body feels that it's, it's important enough for, through, through, I'm sorry, I can't say it, through a fair of the city for traffic purposes to do so. If, if you didn't use this to, to do the authorization for the street, there's, you'd have to go to either special assessment, or I think there might be economic development constitutional authorization to do it. But basically, in order to do a street within the city, there's very limited amount of debt authorizations you could do.
But I would argue, like, Missouri and Arkansas Street, they're right next to each other. Like, why do they both need to be main roadways? Like, what traffic are they going to collect that one of them can't do? And, gosh, trying to think. Also, like, when it comes to clearing the roads off during the snow, doesn't, aren't the main and roadway ones the first one to get cleared? So if we're just upgrading a street just for money so we can have money to make speed bumps or whatever on it, won't that also affect other services? Like, will I have to wait longer on Ridge Court, which is a major roadway, for it to get cleared if we're adding these smaller streets to be major and roadway, like major roadways? I mean, is that going to affect other city services? Like, will they be getting cleared off first during a snowstorm because of this?
Can I just, specifically, we get three minutes.
That's right. Yeah. Okay. So Chris, yeah, let's get all your questions. Is that it?
And also, speed bumps, I thought the purpose, like, I read, the main purpose of a speed bump is to keep traffic off the street. So we're going to upgrade a, like, upgrade a street to put a speed bump on it to keep people from using it. That just seems to go against common sense. Like, if you don't want people using a street, why are you designating it as a major main roadway? That's going, that tells people, this is a street you're supposed to be using. So that's just my opinion.
Other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Michael Allman. I live in Brook Creek neighborhood, and as you probably know, that our neighborhood has been rather puzzled by the use of the designation of Kansas statute, main trafficways, to get obligation bond funding. So my question, since the state statute does not mention anything about using this as a funding mechanism, it seems like Lawrence has issued general obligation bonds for decades. So what other mechanisms besides designating a street as a main trafficway justifies getting general obligation bonds? This surely is not the only way we can use debt financing.
Hi, Phil Collison, and I'm wearing my neighbor hat tonight. And I'm going to admit, I'm a little bit naive on this topic, and my reasoning to come was to just ask the question, why are we doing this? What's the problem being solved? And I'm thinking about East 13th Street, but also Missouri's a part of that, and Lincoln Street's an important part of that. So, and now I'm discovering, these are associated with projects that are going to be done on the street. And that kind of segues to my next question, was what's the notification process to neighbors that there's going to be something happening on your street? And some, I mean, what is the plan for East 13th that this will trigger the ability to get funds for? What, what's that project entail?
Okay, that's the question.
Okay, that's the question. And so then, I was familiar, I mean, after sitting on the Ninth Street Committee, we finally learned that there were residential streets, arterial streets, and collector streets. And now I'm discovering there's a new term, which is major or main trafficways. And, you know, though, I don't understand, yeah, I guess I don't understand the process. What was the notification process on this to let anybody know that we're doing something? There's neighborhood associations involved, and they're real easy to communicate with. Why wasn't there any outreach at all? How does it fit in with, well, yeah. So that's my question.
Okay.
What's, what's going on?
Thanks.
It sounds like it's not very well thought out because, so, thank you.
Other public comment?
Lance Fay, speaking this time as a resident. I'm currently a resident of the Brook Creek neighborhood, but I lived for many years on the 400 block of Missouri. I wasn't planning on speaking on this, but it seems to me that there's a lot of confusion and concern about how financing is being used and debt financing is being used, and what the impact of those projects are. And so I, I do have a question regarding Missouri and Arkansas streets, particularly near the Lawrence Memorial Hospital, if there are any plans for those, and if that includes curbs or drainage, or potentially trying to extend them to Sixth Street, which is, I wouldn't agree with. I also would recommend that the entire item, that you communicate better with neighborhood organizations and the community at large before this being enacted.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll answer some questions now. With Chris's questions.
I, I think what I would recommend at this time is to defer all of this. We have an opportunity to take all the questions, come back, put them in writing, no action be taken tonight. Just defer all of these streets for that purpose.
Is that going to delay the other projects?
I, I think we have the ability to, to wait on this.
Are these, are these, the Bike Way on 13th Street? What are the projects, the Bike Way on 13th Street?
Yeah, these projects include the Bike Boulevard on 13th Street and the traffic calming projects. And so if we defer it, we'll just wait until it gets approved or a decision is made before we solicit proposals for design services.
So it seems to me that we've talked about the Bike Boulevard on 13th Street a fair amount. Okay.
Yeah, this is the second reading. We talked about it last week as well.
Okay. Well, we'll see what the will of the commission is. Again, the item is number seven.
Well, it sounds like we should defer it and wait till questions are answered.
I'm amenable to that?
Yeah, that's fine.
So I entertain a motion?
I'll move to defer item number seven until we receive further information from staff.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Soden, second from Commissioner Herbert. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. And our last consent item to consider separately is number 15. I can't recall who number 15. Chris?
I was just concerned that we're going to have an extremely long meeting. It's just like, we'll have this coming back in the future. Also, I, last meeting, I think the, that at some point, our work session about the reducing the fine for marijuana, and I think that's going to get a lot of people here. And I, for a couple of years, I've been coming to these meetings, and I try to get other people to come, but once marijuana is on the agenda, I'm going to be able to get people to come. And I, I mean, I've been waiting so long to get people to come.
It's, it's only going to be discussion of marijuana, Chris. It's not actually marijuana on the agenda.
Just, I'm going to be able to get people here. And my goal is to get this place filled up. So if that's coming, and also, in August, you have the, the budget, and that's a big meeting. So I'm just concerned that there's too much potential for just a really big, long meeting. So, and also, maybe if there is a marijuana on the, a meeting at some point, maybe have it be its own little one, because I think it could be a, a pretty long discussion if, if a lot of people come out for it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. We'll go to staff here.
Yeah, I, I was thinking we'd put the, Chris's marijuana invitation on the same night we increased the age for smoking cigarettes. Because I'd like to see the contrast, how that plays out. One of the things I would say is we have two open Tuesdays at the end of July. And I know one of them was probably not scheduled because of, you know, the normal kickover, but the thought was that if we needed more meetings, we would know that at this meeting or the second meeting in July, and then we could add a special meeting if we needed to at that point.
Okay.
So that's why we're, we'll try and, we'll try and control the amount of material on that first one with the joint meeting, but.
Okay, thank you.
So that August 7th could be a shorter one.
Right. Yeah. So maybe one of those two at the end of July, we'll have to call a special.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the special.
I'm okay with that.
Yep.
I don't have any vacation plans.
Public comment on this issue? Okay, back to the commission. And again, the item is number 15. Authorize the addition of regular agenda items to the July 10, 2018 city commission meeting.
Make a motion?
I think it's concern related to a specific work session, which I don't believe has been scheduled. Is that correct?
Actually, we do have some items scheduled.
It's the budget.
It's budget, updated revenue projections, and the.
Well, I mean, the, the specific work session he was referring to on marijuana has not been scheduled.
No.
Yeah. So, I mean, specific to the July 10th meeting, I don't think that that affects his specific concern.
Okay. So I believe we have a motion. We're looking for a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion from Vice Mayor Larson, second from Commissioner Herbert. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe that's the mayor. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now we'll move to public comment. The public is allowed to speak to any items or issues except those scheduled on the consent agenda or regular agenda portions of the agenda after first being recognized by the mayor. Each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer to the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments and questions to the commission. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. I do not come with marijuana concerns at this time, which is a relief, I'm sure, for you. I am coming. My name is Thad Holcomb. I'm asking that in a future meeting, that there be agenda item put on for the single-use retail bag ordinance to limit the use of plastic bags. I'm doing so on behalf of Lettuce, the Lawrence Ecology Team United for Sustainability, which is a network of seven faith, community, green teams here, have Jewish, Catholic, and Protestant, and also Sustainability Action Network. And also, on behalf of what used to be the fourth grade elementary class at Kennedy Elementary, and I understand that you saw a PowerPoint presented by them at one time. There really doesn't need to be much said, except we have done study and research, and we will be submitting that to the commission, both where it's been successful and where it has not been successful. And we realize, on a global level, the United Nations has established this is the primary concern now for its Earth Day. And also, of course, if anybody subscribes to National Geographic, they see that that whole issue, or most of it, is dedicated to the problem of plastic, single-use plastic. So we're asking that this be placed as an agenda item in a future commission meeting at some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Any questions for you? No?
Other general public comment?
Hi, Michael Allman again, Sustainability Action Network. This is regarding the 2019 budget, and we are requesting that this commission create a Bike Way Reserve Fund in our budget process. It became apparent to me, at least last week, when we were discussing various funding options for two or three bicycle boulevards, that the prioritization process that's been developed to determine which projects, pedestrian bicycle ADA ramp projects are funded first, was being kind of subverted because of limited funds. That the highest priority project of a bicycle track, shared use path, whatever, along Sixth Street, wasn't funded because there wasn't enough money in the budget, whereas the Lawrence Avenue Bicycle Boulevard was kind of pulled out of a hat, as staff said, simply because they had to find some project that was only $100,000. So to me, this says, the reliability of the amount of funds that we have available any given year kind of hamstrings our ability to be flexible. A number of, you know, city utilities and mobility services, you know, there's a transit fund, there's a stormwater fund, a number of these have that depth of funding that they can draw upon at any given time if necessary. It's kept in reserve. That's what the reserve is for. So I think if we would have a reserve fund for bikeways, it would provide that flexibility. And I like to point out that it's particularly important for bikeways. Sidewalk funding is fairly secure at this point. I mean, even though it's controversial, the property owner obligation to pay for sidewalk maintenance exists, and it's funding that is available and predictable. City code also requires developers to pay for all new sidewalks. There's no similar stipulations for bikeways. There's not even a section in the code for bikeways. So we need to have some way that funding for bikeways and the amenities, which right now is dependent on infrastructure sales tax and on grants. which right now is dependent on infrastructure sales tax and on grants, all that's unpredictable in any given year. So if we have a reserve fund, if we're looking for a project, we need a little bit more money, we can pull it out of reserve. It's tried and true, and works elsewhere.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. On to our regular agenda items. Our first item is to consider adopting on second and final reading ordinance number ninety-three twenty-four pertaining to a community police review board.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Maria Garcia, Assistant City Attorney. This ordinance returns to you for your consideration tonight after the city commission, you all directed staff to make some changes related to redactions two weeks ago. The specific direction was twofold. Number one, staff was to review Section one dash twenty-five oh four B two related to redactions to address specific exemptions for when the file is handed over to the board from the Office of Professional Accountability. And then the second direction was to look into IT capabilities for redacting audio and video recordings. I'll let Representative from the Police Department address the IT question about redactions and the software that's available for that. But as far as the ordinance that's before you today and the redactions, the changes to the redaction section, the difference between the draft that was presented to you two weeks ago and tonight's draft is that staff has added some language to address what types of information can be redacted. Um, there are three different categories of redactions. That includes, number one, information that would subject the city to civil or criminal liability. The second category is information that would otherwise adversely affect an ongoing criminal investigation, ongoing criminal prosecution, or ongoing civil action. And the third category is redaction for information that is otherwise prohibited by law or policy. And then under that, as you can see in the red line version, there is a paragraph that lists out specific exemptions. We met with all the attorneys in our office and discussed and brainstormed all of the redactions that we could think of, and the list is not exhaustive. It could not be exhaustive in an ordinance, so that's why we have these, um, the larger sections for something that, in the city attorney's opinion, would subject the city to liability. And as I stated in the cover memo, many of those redactions that are listed specifically are closed by state statute, so we wouldn't have discretion to release them, even if the city wanted to. And then we also added an introductory sentence to C two, as you can see, that states, "Efforts shall be made to provide as much information as possible to the board in its review of an appeal under this subsection, and the purpose of that is to declare or reflect the city commission's intent for this to be as transparent of a board as possible and to provide, in every case, as much information as, as possible." And I can stand for questions, or I can turn it over to address the IT question, whichever order you prefer to have it in.
Well, let's start with questions for you.
Okay.
Questions from Maria?
I have a legal question. One of your, uh, further definitions of what, what would lead to a redaction. You say only information that would subject the city to civil or criminal liability. Wouldn't an action by a Lawrence Police Department officer potentially subject the city to civil liability and therefore enable virtually anything shown on police footage to thereby be redacted?
Well, yes, action by a city police officer could subject the city to liability. We say here that these redactions will be made on a case-by-case basis. And again, we have that phrase, that efforts shall be made to provide as much information as possible. You're, you are correct, though, but it's the intent of the ordinance and, and staff to provide as much as we can.
So the, um, as far as the redactions go, it will be case-by-case by the city attorney. Will there be procedures as to how this will be done, policy, anything along that line? Or will it just be, will they have to write a report saying this is why it was redacted?
The, the ordinance as written doesn't require the city attorney to provide a report about why it wasn't provided, but, um, I suppose if the board were to ask or inquire why certain things are redacted without giving the information, they could be provided an explanation of why it was taken out, because the city manager does, um, or there is a staff liaison. I'm not sure what section that's on. But that information could be provided to the liaison to then give to the board.
This is the reason why?
Yes. It's not in, it's not in the ordinance, but what I'm saying is that it, there's nothing that would prohibit the board from seeing that something's redacted and then giving an explanation without providing the private information. This was redacted because it was social security information, or this was redacted because it involves medical information of somebody, et cetera.
So that would be given to?
It, it certainly could. There's nothing that would prohibit it.
Is that something that should be in the ordinance, or is that a policy?
Well, that, it, it would be up to, to you whether it should be in there.
Okay.
Other questions from Maria?
Right now, I might have some in a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Adam Hafnem, a captain with Lawrence Police Department, currently in the Investigation Division. Previously, I was involved in the IT division, so I will be the IT representative tonight. Uh, we did some research and located some different software options in reference to redaction. There are several different options. One concern of ours is the time that it would take to do lengthy redactions. If you have ten hours of video, the rule of thumb amongst investigators that I've spoken to is about ten times as much time to redact something down to frame by frame to make sure that we're not putting out something that shouldn't be put out. Uh, that can be achieved a couple of different ways. Traditional editing software is one option, but that comes with more time. Uh, our NCAR video system that we currently use has a product that is using some AI and some algorithms in order to identify faces and documents and things like that, to try and make that a more efficient process. And that's kind of where everything is going with, uh, NCAR video, body camera video, things like that. Obviously, when we get into body cameras in the next, or in the coming months, what product we select, we'll have to have that as a component. Um, but the, uh, the software is, is out there right now for what we currently utilize in the neighborhood of, of four, four thousand dollars for a software that would do that in an efficient manner and be able to provide that, that, uh, end product out in a timely manner. So that's not cost prohibitive in our minds, and this is kind of a good marrying of technology and the abilities that you're looking for.
Questions for Adam?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we go to public comment?
Yeah, right now.
Let's have public comment on this issue. Public comment.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. Um, my concern was what Commissioner Herbert brought up, so, um, I just want to act like, so is it rather than, if an officer makes a mistake and the city could be sued, rather than admit it, the city is just going, going to delete evidence of anything inappropriate ever happening? And then, I don't know, deny, deny, deny to avoid having to pay any money in a lawsuit? And wouldn't, wouldn't it just be better for the city to suck it up and do what's right instead of trying to cover up any wrongdoing just to avoid a lawsuit? So I'm, I'm very much against making an exception, like editing stuff out so the city doesn't get sued. And when it says a redaction was made because of, are they going to say this, a redaction was made because of a potential lawsuit? So, thank you.
Other public comment? I guess I'd appreciate a staff response to Mr. Flowers.
Um, well, like I said, we've met several times within the city attorney's office to try to craft language that achieves the goals of the city commission in releasing information and our obligation as attorneys for the city, which is to minimize the risk of liability and to minimize the chance that the city is going to get sued. And so we, we thought that we have to leave this language broad. If you would want very specific language and take out those catch-all phrases, that would be against our legal advice. As I said, we have discussed this, and that's the opinion of our office.
I, I guess what, what I'm looking for is a response that would say whether or not this process would be exclusive to the legal process. I mean, the people's rights to sue the city are going to exist separate from this body. Is that correct?
That's right, but it mitigates liability on the city to keep, um, private information that's closed by statute. So of course, somebody could have a right to sue the city, but by limiting information that's closed by statute to these board members, we are further, further minimizing potential liability. That's the goal, is to keep the city from lawsuits and liability.
Uh, I think what, what I was understanding was if somebody were to bring a legal action to the city, a subpoena would be requested for video, and the video they would receive would be unredacted video.
That was kind of where I was.
Yeah, the, the video that we're talking about, redaction, is redaction for the purpose of this board. And, and to address the question specifically, the redaction we're discussing is not redaction of an officer's actions. It's redaction of, for example, we go to Fred and Wilma's house, and, and their neighbor Betty is there, and they're involved in an argument or a domestic. Betty doesn't want any part of that. She doesn't want to be exposed to the public for something she had nothing to do with. There may be legal grounds for us to protect her privacy in that matter, or any children in that house. Uh, we're not looking to redact the officer's conversation with her unless it delved into medical privacy, uh, you know, information or something, um, that Ms. Garcia's referred to in, in the memo.
And, and I guess the key point is that the original would still remain and would be subject to subpoena in a court proceeding.
Correct, and that is why the software I mentioned before is kind of costly. What we do, first of all, an evidence copy is maintained and all that, and it is left alone. It is the original. It is not touched. We create a copy, which in case law becomes also an original. That would be redacted, and the software that we use does an audit trail of what has changed, what is, you know, what is omitted, what is blocked off, all those kind of things. That's why we don't just use, you know, like a, a media player mute button, so.
Okay, thank you.
So this information is not being released to the public. I, I think you used that word in that, released to the public. It's not being released to the public. It's being released to this review board. So why would it need to be redacted if it's not actually being released to the public?
Well, this, the board members are not city employees. They're not law enforcement. They're still considered citizens. And so we, that's why we'd want to redact as much as possible, because they're not, um, internal, I guess, part of the city.
So you do want to redact as much as possible?
So if we got an open records request for the same information from the Office of Professional Accountability file, we would redact, um, as, as well, like if we got a media inquiry, um, as well as what the board sees. So we do consider them citizens, members of the public, even though they are board members.
Okay. I had one other question. Um, and this goes back to a di- a different section regarding the, if the board receives a complaint, they have to take it to the police department. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Could they go to the Attorney General?
The Attorney General does not conduct these investigations as of recently. Instead, they get forwarded to the Kansas C Post, which is the state certifying agency. And yes, a complainant could go just directly to that agency for investigation of their complaint.
Could the board?
Could the board?
If, if the board receives a complaint, could the board pass that on to a state versus local?
Um, well, if a citizen could, then I suppose the board could, but the way that the ordinance is written states that the board shall provide the Office of Professional Accountability with the complaint.
I think that the ordinance would direct it to the Police Department for investigation, the way the ordinance is written.
Yeah, it's the way it's written now, but is, is that a limitation? I mean, if, if they legally can go to the AG if they wanted to, or whoever at that state level, would this ordinance prevent them from doing that?
No, it wouldn't. And in fact, even at the conclusion of an OPA investigation, the complainant could refile with the state agency for, uh, another investigation.
I'm talking about the board itself, not the.
The board could. I mean, right now, with the way the ordinance is written, the board forwards to the Lawrence Police Department, not to C Post. But if a citizen could forward to C Post, then.
Could the board?
I'm not sure why the board would be prohibited from forwarding as well.
So the board could go directly to that.
Yes, but once the board forwards it to C Post, it's out of the city's hands. They're not necessarily going to share information, um, yes.
Although, wouldn't the.
Well, can the, can the board disclose?
Yeah, that's.
I mean, the board can't disclose.
That would seem to violate.
That would violate their.
I thought, I'm sorry. I thought your question was, could they forward the complaint to C Post for investigation? Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah. So they could certainly forward, and then C Post would investigate.
I don't think they can disclose information that they obtained in their role as a board member to anybody but the.
Yeah, that seems to be a violation of one twenty-five oh seven.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
I, I, my interpretation was that they, they could not, that the procedure was set up to turn it over to the Police Department for investigation.
And that's the way I'm reading the ordinance, but I just was wondering if there's some.
If there were a waiver from the complainant perhaps that said you can, I mean, we would look for something like that, but.
I, I think the board member could refer him to, say, you've got a choice. You can go here. You can go there.
That's right.
I don't think the, I don't think the board member should be making that decision for the complaint, but that's.
And even a waiver from the individual, I mean, the whole purpose of one twenty-five oh seven is not just for the complaint. It's for all parties involved.
Yeah.
And so if, I mean, there's, this is kind of an important question to get answered because ultimately, the question becomes to what level do, do we offer unredacted video to this board? And if, on, on one hand, if we have one twenty-five oh seven in place, and it actually has teeth to it, you can offer unredacted video and know that that's a place of confidentiality amongst that board. But if we're going to say that at any point, a member of that board, because they are a citizen, can turn around and do with that what they wish, then all of a sudden, one twenty-five oh seven has no teeth. Right?
Make sure I was clear on that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. Um, but just to clarify, Vice Mayor, your question about, I, I think that it got answered, but the way that it's written, as you've acknowledged, is that it goes directly to the Lawrence Police Department right now.
But the board does have the right to, if, if it comes back to the board, I should say, they have the right to inform the complaint that they can go to, uh, AG or whoever.
Yeah, so this, to the state.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
I want to make sure Jennifer didn't have any questions.
We're checking in with Jennifer.
I'm here. I think that most of my questions have been asked and talked about.
So we've considered it. We've had public comment. We've had questions and answers. We've had some discussion.
Have we had public comment? You already did that. Chris booked.
So at this point.
I got, yeah.
More questions?
No more questions, but I just had a few comments, I guess, or anything. I'm, I'm still concerned about this whole policy. You know, I know that staff's done a good job of trying to incorporate lists of redactions. Um, I'm, and I've just sat down and spoke with Maria, as well as Randy, about it. Um, but some of the language in here, where you use terms such as but are not limited to and subject to civil or criminal liability, I've, I'm still concerned about that. It doesn't seem to really offer it as much teeth as I would hope. That's, concerns me. But at the same time, we've been dealing with this for quite some time, and I just wonder if, um, even though I'm not real sold on the idea of what's in here, um, whether we need to get this, move this thing forward and possibly, um, once we get the board in place, have them work with it, and then maybe come back in six months or a year and relook at what we need to change to make this better. I still think it needs to have better, uh, more definitive, um, work done on it.
I'm going to jump in real quick and agree with Lisa. Um, I think that the question around why things are redacted and having that explanation to the boards so that when we do that review, we have an understanding of how that's. to the boards, so that when we do that review, we have an understanding of how that's being used. I don't make an assumption that it would be abused or anything like that, but it can be, and so, I think that having that review within a year, six months, or however long that may take for that process to get in place and get everybody on the board and get that moving, would be ideal.
I would also like to consider, maybe down the road, is that if there needs to be a policy written for the redactions, as well as any procedure or policy as to how the city manager would go through the review process if it goes to that person. That may or may not be needed, but I think should be considered.
Other comments?
I expressed this already, but my largest concern with this policy is the degree to which 12507 actually has value. And I, to be perfectly honest with you, feel less confident in it now than I did an hour ago. I mean, it's very clear, "The board members participating in the appeal of a complaint related to racial or otherwise based policing, or any other complaint they receive from a citizen, sign a confidentiality agreement indicating such members' agreement to protect the privacy of officers and others involved in the confidentiality of the board's proceedings." And it goes on, it talks about removal of the board. At one point in here, I believe it talks about a Class A non-person misdemeanor. It appears to be very strongly worded language regarding that what happens in these proceedings are a very private affair, and that they don't leave the room, and that we're giving a great deal of power to individuals within the community. But we need to be very clear that if that's the case, then that needs to be the case, that this can't be a situation where we decide with the information we've received to go an alternative route, because we're private citizens, and that's a legal right private citizens have. I mean, that needs to be spelled out very clearly, otherwise, 12507 has no teeth.
I think it's good to go ahead and move it forward and have the board continue working on it. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I think it's time. So, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we adopt on second and final reading ordinance number 9324. Did I just misunderstand what happened two minutes ago?
No, we have a motion, but we don't have a second.
No, before that, it sounded like we had four people that were willing to move forward, but maybe that's not true.
I have a lot of concerns moving forward if our plan of action is that we're going to move forward and pass it on to someone else to figure out. I think that's a terrible strategy when it comes to leadership. One of my biggest frustrations as a city commissioner for three years is the argument that, "But we've worked on it so long, so it's time." There is no, I mean, we're not on a three-minute shot clock. If it takes another month to get it right, take another month to get it right, as opposed to handing a policy we see has holes in it to a group of non-elected people and saying, "Fix this for us because we couldn't." That concerns me, not just on this issue, but so many others we deal with in the community, but tonight on this issue. I'm unwilling to make the, "But we've spent time on it, so we need to pass it." That's not an argument. It's not an argument with any value.
Well, I'm the one who said it's time.
Well, then, second the motion.
Well, I'm going to respond to your comments first. We've put a lot into this, and we've worked on it quite a bit, and it's an improved version from where it was. It will work. I believe it will work. So, I'll second it. I'll second it. So, I have a motion and a second. Motion from Commissioner Soden, second from Mayor Bowley. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Thank you, four from one. Our second issue is to consider adopting on first reading ordinance number 9305 pertaining to licensing and regulation of bodywork practitioners within the City of Lawrence.
I'm the Assistant City Attorney. Just open up a PowerPoint here. The ordinance before you tonight would establish licensing and regulation of bodywork in the City of Lawrence. I'll note at the outset that this ordinance is called "bodywork" and not "massage therapy" as it was previously referred to when this was brought before you about a year and a half ago. And that is because of some education and some discussion that we've had with the bodywork community in Lawrence. These have been very insightful meetings, and we learned that bodywork encompasses many different modalities, not just massage therapy. And so, when I refer to bodywork, it means it includes massage therapy, but also other areas of similar services that can be provided. This ordinance, or similar ordinance, was brought before you in March of 2017. At that time, the city commission declined to pass it and instead instructed staff to work with the bodywork community in Lawrence and consider a proposed draft that that community brought to the city. Since then, staff has met with the bodywork community in Lawrence on several different occasions, and as I said, those meetings were very insightful and helpful, and we used the feedback and input in those meetings to craft the ordinance that's before you tonight. Before reviewing with you the specific provisions of this ordinance, which is the purpose of the PowerPoint, I wanted to just point out some areas or some sections that we removed from the original ordinance, if you'll recall. The first thing that was removed was a requirement that business establishments register with the city clerk. The new ordinance only requires that the practitioner obtain a license, not the business that they actually work for. A second item that was removed was a requirement that businesses keep a client register that would keep track of client names, dates of service, et cetera. And now, we only have a register for the practitioners who work at an establishment, but not their client list. We also removed an hours of operation section stating that businesses could not operate between certain hours in the evening. There were some valid arguments that were brought to the city commission at the time, and so, we removed that section. Fourth, we removed an operations section requiring certain things like doors to be unlocked at all times, language requiring certain dress for practitioners, and language concerning cleanliness and sanitation. And then finally, we removed a language about a jail sentence for violation of that article, and instead, now it is a fine. And that's consistent with other licensing ordinances that we have. So, with that, I'll go into some specific sections of the ordinance. First, the cost of a bodywork practitioner license is $75, and that will need to be renewed every two years. The renewal fee is $50. And each practitioner who's issued a license will be provided an identification card with their photo and other information that the city clerk thinks is relevant. If the practitioner were to lose, that identification card replacement is $15, otherwise, it is part of the $75 licensing fee. I'm sorry, this is quite small. This section talks about, sets out the requirement for a practitioner to have a license. So, A just says that a person needs to have a license issued by the city clerk before engaging or practicing bodywork in Lawrence. A business or an individual cannot employ a person to provide bodywork services without first being licensed. A person cannot practice with an expired or revoked license. And D is important because it points out that a practitioner only is required to obtain one license, no matter where they're working. Let's say they work at three different places, they only need to have one license. The next section provides some exceptions to that general rule that a person needs to be licensed. Currently enrolled students, where they are practicing massage or other bodywork as part of their course of study, they wouldn't need to obtain a license as part of their schooling. Second, if there's a temporary or a planned community event, then a person who is already licensed in another jurisdiction could come to Lawrence without obtaining a local license to practice, and that is, again, for a temporary event that's been planned.
I have a question, Maria.
Sure.
For one, the part that you were just reading, that if they're an educational program and they don't have to have a license, is there a limit to, I mean, I'm trying to think of if someone had an unlawful place, and they were perhaps using individuals, and they were just saying that they were students, is there some kind of timeline in which those people can, I guess, obtain or finish their education? I'm not sure how to word this, just so that someone can't get away with it by just saying, "Oh, they're students."
Well, they have, are you talking about number two on planned community event or a student?
I'm on six, 2004, A1.
A1, okay, so a currently enrolled student.
I can't read that, so.
I'm sorry.
I think that's the part that you're on. Like, how do we know they're really students?
Well, they...
I guess is what I'm asking.
They, so they're, the approved bodywork education program is defined in the definition section.
Oh, good, okay.
And so, it has to be a legitimate school that they're attending.
So, they have to prove it?
If, yes, if asked, yes, that's correct.
Thank you, that's exactly what I wanted.
And then, step, and then four is another exception that states that a person could practice massage or other bodywork on a family or household member without obtaining, they wouldn't need to obtain a license for that purpose. Section B is something that we came up with as a group with the community, and it provides for registration. What this ordinance does is it gives practitioners 18 months to become formally licensed with the city, but because it might take some time for them to gather their documentation, their transcripts, et cetera, we've provided this registration section, which means that they can practice in Lawrence if they just first register with the city clerk, so they can continue working and obtain their livelihood while getting their documents together to obtain formal licensure. And so, the next few slides just spell out exactly what they have to provide, their contact information, name, their fingerprints for a criminal background check, where they plan on working, if that information is available. Next section is the Practitioners Register, which I mentioned previously. This is to keep a log of people who are working at a certain establishment so that law enforcement, if necessary, can compare that to the licensees with the city clerk's office, just to make sure that nobody is practicing without being licensed. 2007 is the section regarding application for a new applicant. So, let's say somebody just finishes school, straight out of school, they want to apply for a bodywork practitioner's license, they would be using this section, and again, it just lists out every requirement that they would have to, all the information they would provide to the city clerk. 2008 is connected to 2007. 2007, which I, all of these requirements, they have to provide that information to the city clerk. In addition to that, the practitioner or applicant has to provide proof of education and examination. And this is something that Lawrence, if this is passed, would be really in a unique position for. This is considered a comprehensive ordinance, which means that it addresses all of bodywork and all different kinds of modalities, rather than just massage therapy. Many other cities and jurisdictions that have ordinances similar to this, they only license and have requirements for massage therapists, but this one is comprehensive, like I said. So, there are education standards, examination standards for everyone who's practicing bodywork in Lawrence. So, these slide, this one addresses the education requirements for a massage therapist, and these numbers, for example, these other bodywork practitioners, 500-hour nationally recognized manual therapy training program, 96 hours of continuing education, these are taken from national certification boards. In many cases, we also received input from experts in the field here in Lawrence about what best practices would be. So, we've taken these education examination requirements from different sources. We also looked at other state laws that also have comprehensive requirements for different modalities, in addition to all of those. 2009 is the section, it's the grandfather provision. A person who has been practicing bodywork in Lawrence for two of the last three years could obtain a license in a more expedited fashion by showing the city clerk that they have been regularly practicing bodywork in Lawrence for two of the past three years, or teaching core clinical classes at an institution in Lawrence for two of the last three years. And the way that they can prove that is provided by the last paragraph. They can provide tax returns, tax forms, or a notarized affidavit under penalty of perjury from a few of their clients or other practitioners who are licensed to prove that they have also been practicing in Lawrence. And then lastly, to be grandfathered in, that practitioner would have to show evidence that's satisfactory to the city clerk, that they have been trained or educated in the area of their, in their specialty. And that can be through a transcript, but if a transcript's not available because the school has closed, then the applicant has other options of providing that information to the city clerk by just giving as much information about the school and their mentor as possible. 2010 is about licensure by reciprocity, which means that an applicant who has been licensed in another jurisdiction, whether it's another city in Kansas or another state, they can also obtain a license in a more expedited fashion through this section. They'd have to provide the information that's in section 2007 about their information, contact information, where they plan on working, insurance information, et cetera. And then, the clerk will contact the jurisdiction that they're coming from to just ensure that they're in good standing and, in fact, licensed there. 2011 provides a list of reasons for which the city clerk could deny an applicant's application. The reasons are that the application is incomplete, it's fraudulent, the person has lied about something on their application, the person has had their, a similar license revoked from another jurisdiction. And then four provides some criminal history information. We have narrowed this a bit from the last time that we met about this. A person would be precluded if they've had a sexually-related felony or misdemeanor due to the sensitive nature of this work, but we have limited the other types of crime to just the last five years, rather than leaving it open forever. And that would include any other felony, a person misdemeanor, and any violation of this article. Information about outstanding arrest warrants that could also preclude, application does not meet the education requirements, or they could not be verified, or the applicant has not paid all of their fees. So, generally, this language in section B is saying that, actually, I think it's this one, the person can reapply if they didn't pay their license, if they didn't finish their application, if it's incomplete or whatever reason, or if their education credentials could not be verified, they can go ahead and reapply, but for any other reasons, they would have to wait a year before they can make that application again. 2012 directs the city clerk to issue identification cards to those practitioners who have obtained a license. And again, the cost of that is $15, and that is to ensure that any person who is actually providing a bodywork service to somebody in Lawrence has that ID card on them, and they can verify that they are actually licensed, that they have provided adequate proof of training and education to the city. 2013 makes the license non-transferable, which means that if I were to obtain a license, I can't share it with my friend, just so that they can work on one day of the week. The license is reserved for the person for whom it was issued, and it cannot be transferred to anybody else. 2014 requires those licenses to be renewed. It has the language that's consistent with other licensing language in the city code. So, nothing really new there. The person has to apply for a renewal before the expiration of their current license, and the cost, if they are late in doing that, is $25. 2015 provides for an appeal of anyone who had their license application denied, and in those cases, the city clerk will issue a notice of, I'm sorry, will issue a notice of denial to that person, and then, within 14 days of receiving that notice of denial, the applicant has an opportunity to appeal it to this new Bodywork Advisory Board that's also being established by this ordinance. Then, if the applicant is not satisfied with the conclusion of the board, then a final place that that applicant can go is to this body, to the city commission, to consider whether the city clerk appropriately denied their application. 2016 establishes that advisory board, and a lot of this language is consistent with the resolution that this commission passed in September about advisory boards. It discusses the terms that are allowed. This board would have five members. Four of those members would be bodywork professionals, experts in the field, and then one would be a member from the public at large who resides within the City of Lawrence. 2017 discusses licensee disciplinary action, and rather than just defaulting to criminal sanctions that are provided under 2018, which I'll get to, this section provides for other things like issuing a reprimand or placing a license holder on probation, having them be supervised by another professional. having them be supervised by another professional instead of going the greatest method, which is to revoke their license. So, there are other options. So, a reprimand might be appropriate in cases where, for example, somebody... Let's see what those are. Practiced outside the scope of authority, training, and education, and the city clerk is the person who can hand out those disciplinary actions. There is also a section for summary suspension, which means that if there is a person who is practicing or purports to be practicing bodywork, and there is a continuing threat to public health, welfare, or safety, then that person could be immediately suspended as long as a hearing is set within fourteen days of that suspension. And then finally, twenty eighteen talks about the municipal offense. So, if it is appropriate to be forwarded to the city prosecutor, then this is the section that the city prosecutor and the municipal court will be considering, and that is, again, like I said previously, maximum fine of one thousand dollars. The municipal court judge has absolute discretion on what kind of sentence to hand down to somebody. There's no minimum that is provided here, so the judge can't say, "Well, I have to fine you at least two hundred dollars." It's just within the court's discretion. I tried to do that quickly but efficiently. Those are... That is the new ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Maria. Thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you.
And thank you to all who worked on it. Public comment on this issue?
Hello, my name is Holly Krebs. I'm a certified Rolfur in town. I'm a member of the Lawrence Massage and Bodywork Alliance, and the ladies that are standing with me are also members. We have other people in our group who are not able to attend tonight. I'd like to read out loud the letter that we submitted as part of the packet to express our support for the ordinance. The Lawrence Massage and Bodywork Alliance Steering Committee supports the current draft of ordinance nine three zero five. We are grateful to the city attorney's office and law enforcement officials for listening to, learning from, and collaborating with our professional community this year. They held multiple in-depth meetings with the local practitioners to understand our profession, business structures, and training programs. They integrated many of our recommendations and removed offensive and unnecessary portions of their policy's first draft. In contrast to the proposal you saw a year and a half ago, the policy before you now is a professionally-oriented policy using industry-standard language and regulations. It verifies that all bodywork practitioners in Lawrence, Kansas are legitimately-trained practitioners acting professionally, safely, and ethically, and it recognizes the city's need to draw upon our community's expertise by creating a board of professionals who can advise the city on this policy and its implementation. This proposal is also groundbreaking because it comprehensively includes all bodyworkers, including structural integrators, reflexologists, Reiki practitioners, subtle energy practitioners, and more. Most state regulations only cover massage therapists and exempt other bodyworkers. From a regulatory perspective, this leaves loopholes for illicit practitioners to claim they practiced an exempted modality, and from a professional perspective, it means that non-massage bodyworkers are unrecognized and unregulated as professionals by governing bodies. With our professional community's help, the city crafted a comprehensive policy that covers all bodyworkers. This inclusive approach better reflects our broader profession, better protects our clients and ourselves, and is a progressive approach that more cities and states should consider as a model. We understand the advantages of regulating bodywork, and we are grateful to have such a reasonable and accurate policy before the commission tonight. We ask that you pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your work on this as well. Other public comment?
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. If licenses and regulations help stop sex trafficking, then if Kansas truly wanted to put an end to sex slavery, shouldn't they allow grown adults to engage in prostitution legally and then regulate and license that? When you ban something outright, that forces what you ban onto the black market, and the black market is where shady stuff starts happening. Case in point, many years ago, my friend came over with some marijuana, and we smoked it. Shortly after, we both started feeling something wasn't quite right. That's right, it was laced. Then, not too long ago, Colorado legalized marijuana, and now a lot of the marijuana being sold around here comes from dispensaries in Colorado, and you hardly ever hear tales anymore of people buying pot that's laced. I say the same basics applied to prostitution. If prostitution was legalized and reasonably regulated, then most people would rather deal with a legitimate licensed prostitute than have to deal with pimps and potential sex slaves. So, I propose this: the city allows for licensed masseurs to give genital massages if the masseur and the client both agree to it. We let someone get naked and have every other part of their body touched and rubbed by a massage therapist. Hell, we let proctologists spend their day fingering men and sticking things up their anus. So, if someone wants to yank a guy's crank, I say let them. Picture this: a big, old sweaty fat guy. Would getting him off with your hand actually be that much worse than giving him a full-body massage, getting up in there under the folds of fat, or being the proctologist, sticking your finger up his ass? And that brings me to my last point. This is about a group of people imposing their morality on the rest of society. If a grown adult wants a handjob, another grown adult... And another grown adult is willing to give one for money, then let them. That's both freedom and capitalism, and that's the foundation of our country. If you have a problem with a genital massage, then don't get one and allow other consenting adults to do what they want. That would truly be a happy ending for everyone. Thank you.
Other public comment? Okay, let's bring it back to the commission.
I think it's good to go ahead and move forward with this. I'd like to have the new advisory board within a year or so determine if there's any other loopholes that we need to worry about with sex trafficking, that they can bring it back to us if they have any changes they would like to see in the ordinance, but I'm okay with moving this forward.
I have just one item in that I would like further discussion on, and that is the advisory board. It appears as though that they can either be a resident of the city or work within the city of Lawrence. So, we could effectively have a board that nobody lives in Lawrence. Is that something that we want to encourage?
Isn't that what we did for another board?
I think it was just one position, though, wasn't it?
It was the chair of the...
Economic Development.
Yeah.
As long as they worked within Lawrence.
Correct. Which... But it's similar because...
Commissioner Herbert pointed out, we're the ones who have the opportunity to appoint these folks.
But I think contextually, it makes sense. What we... And, you know, it seems strange coming from me, because I think I was the one that fought against it the hardest, but ultimately, the argument that you pushed forward was that it makes sense with economic development because that individual working in Lawrence is clearly tied to that issue, whereas with bodywork practitioners, again, working in Lawrence makes a lot of sense contextually with the issue that they're studying. I... It would... I suppose hypothetically, it's possible that we could end up with a board entirely of non-Lorontians, but I would hope that whoever is seated as mayor at the time would work to make sure that that is not the case.
But I just hope that this is not a purview of going forward for other boards, is that we're going to start adding this type of language in? That basically, anybody who, in Kansas or wherever, could come and be on our board or if they work here. So, I'm concerned about the creep that I'm seeing here. That's what I'm concerned about.
I don't disagree at all, but I think we set that precedent already.
Yeah.
Well, that kind of takes me to my point, which is I remain interested in having the conversation with county. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I think it's a good ordinance, but I think we need to make sure that we're communicating with the folks at the county government so that they have an opportunity to mirror within their context the kinds of things that we've done so that we're not sending a problem that's been in the city out to the unincorporated areas of the county. I see some comment here. I think maybe this might be pertinent, so I'm going to go ahead and...
In January, I met with District Attorney Charles Branson and Mark Simpson. We spoke about this issue and how to integrate this policy across the county. Charles Branson's recommendation was that if we were to craft a good ordinance that was passed by the city of Lawrence, that it would be easier, not only for the county but also for the other cities within the county, to have a model that they may be able to pass as well. So, his recommendation is that we move forth on this policy before us and then take that same policy to the other governing bodies within the county.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I think Maria's coming forward as well, so...
And I just wanted to add that I had been in touch with an attorney for the county, John Bullock. I met with him in person when this didn't pass, and then we've been in touch periodically by email, and he has expressed interest on behalf of the county in something like this. I think they, like Holly said, were waiting for the city to pass an ordinance before taking it to consideration.
Well, I appreciate that, and I had no intention of holding this up to wait for that to happen, but with, you know, hopefully passing this, that will provide the other jurisdictions with some information that they can use. So, thank you. I appreciate that information. Any other comment? Jennifer?
Hi, John, I'm very appreciative of the work that's gone into this, and I know how hard the bodywork industry as well as Maria and the rest of the city attorneys have worked, so thank you for everything that you've done.
Okay. Again, the issue before us is consider adopting on first reading ordinance number ninety-three oh five.
I would move that we adopt on first reading ordinance number nine three oh five pertaining to the licensing and regulation of bodywork practitioners within the city of Lawrence.
Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Herbert, second from Commissioner Soden. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. We're going to take a ten-minute break. Jennifer, are you here? Jennifer? Quarter, is Jennifer still with us? Okay, well...
I'll text her.
Thank you. Well, we're with four at least, obvious at this point.
Sorry, I'm here.
Okay.
I couldn't get my mute off.
Thank you. Okay, we're back to five. And Scott?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening. Scott McCullough with Planning and Development Services, pinch hitting for Brian Jimenez, their code enforcement manager. He's on some much-deserved R and R this week. The item before you tonight is to hold a hearing to consider adoption of Resolution seven-two-five-five, which requires the property owner of eight oh one Lincoln Street to abate the cited property maintenance code violation of keeping salvage material, to abate that within twenty days of adoption of this resolution, and further directing city staff to abate the violation if the property owner fails to abate it as ordered and recoup any funds it requires... It takes the city to do that. Briefly, I'll review the case with you. The property is located here at Eighth Street, Lincoln, and Lion Street. It's actually zoned industrial general IG, but it has a single-family residence and accessory structure, which is accessed off of Lincoln Street here. The offending structure is located in this area right here to the mid-north of the property. This color that you see here is the floodplain, the regulatory floodplain, so you can see the structure is partly in that floodplain, and throughout this process, we've advised Mrs. Garber that that's a violation of our floodplain regulations as well. On August thirty-first, two thousand seventeen... I'm sorry, let me back up. The property owner of record is Doug Garber Construction Incorporated, and on August thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, Bernice Garber placed this uninhabitable, dilapidated mobile home on the property without going through the site plan submittal process of which the code requires. The IG zoning district actually does allow for exterior storage of materials, but there are certain code requirements that have to be met through the site plan process in order to store such material. So, on September seventh, two thousand seventeen, staff cited Mrs. Garber and the owner for a violation of the city's land development code for failure to obtain that site plan approval. We ordered the mobile home to be removed by September twentieth of two thousand seventeen, and Mrs. Garber advised that the storage of the home was short-term, as she was going to seek approval for the redevelopment of the property and use the mobile home in that redevelopment, acquire the necessary building permits, rehabilitate it from kind of a salvage state back to a permissible structure. She actually met with staff a few times. We had discussions about her plans, but Mrs. Garber did not complete that site plan submittal application and failed to remove the mobile home by the deadline. Therefore, staff filed a complaint through the city's municipal court on November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. That court case is still in progress. The next court date is actually August second. I'm going to show you the timeline here because I think a little bit of knowledge of the court proceeding is necessary with this case. Just quickly review that a case was filed January ninth of two thousand eighteen, and the judge dismissed that case without prejudice upon a finding of a defective complaint. The prosecutor's office filed a case on February fifth with arraignment held February twenty-seventh. It was set for status March twenty-sixth. That status was held. Mrs. Garber did not appear for that court date. A bench warrant was issued the following day. The defendant appeared on the add-on docket the day after that, and the case was set for status for April twenty-third. A couple of more status cases were continued at Mrs. Garber's request until yesterday, when the status was held, and the case was set for trial August second. I reflect this for the commission because it shows the sort of the trend of delay in this case in resolving this issue by Mrs. Garber in that she delays in site plan applications. She's trying to delay the court proceedings. So, because of the length of time, the property has been in violation without compliance through the court system, and because of the complaints that staff continues to see and hear from surrounding neighbors on the blight... The blighting effect of the structure, we decided to pursue the alternative property maintenance code violation, and so we cited the property owner on May seventh of this year, ordering the mobile home to be removed by May twenty-ninth. The mobile home, and this is the offending material. You can see, if you zoom in, it's uninhabitable in pretty severe state of dilapidation. It is in violation, in staff's opinion, section three oh two point one zero of the property maintenance code. For these reasons, staff recommends that the city commission adopt Resolution seven-two-five-five, requiring the owner to remove the mobile home by no later than July tenth, two thousand eighteen, and if not removed, giving staff the authority to abate the nuisance and if... and to recover cost per Kansas statute. And with that, I will stand for question.
Questions for Scott?
How will our decision tonight affect the pending court case?
We would coordinate with the prosecutor's office on the timing of things, and if we end up abating the nuisance ourselves, then I think that would affect that in a way. We have been coordinating to this point with the prosecutor's office. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. So, we're to conduct a public hearing. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Soden, second from Commissioner Herbert. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous. So, the public hearing is open. Public hearing on Resolution number seven-two-five-five.
My name is Vanita Chanel and my address is 637 North Eighth Street. On August 31st, 2017, I went out my front door going to work, and I saw a semi-truck in front of my house with this trailer on the back of it. My first thought was, what the heck? My second thought was, am I being pranked? And my third thought was, is this somebody's idea of affordable housing? Because it was a very bad joke. I immediately called the Office of Zoning and the North Lawrence Association to see whether we could get this corrected pretty immediately. Since that early morning shock almost a year ago, I've been working with the zoning department to have this dilapidated trailer that has only deteriorated further over the past year to be removed from the property across the street from my home. What I believed was an easily corrected violation of city zoning and that I thought would be corrected quickly. In fact, I thought by the Tuesday after Labor Day that this would be resolved. This has turned into a one-year saga that has generated considerable stress with each passing day, with each continuance that's been granted to the property owner, with every update that another thirty days, another twenty days, another twenty days had been granted, and that the realization, and coming to the realization, that full disclosure of zoning was not provided when I purchased my home. I've been very disappointed in how this has been dealt with, as have my neighbors. Although I initially thought this was going to be an easy solution, I've learned that it's only worse than what I originally thought. I've learned that the property across the street that had been a residence for the past sixty-five years is not zoned as residential property. When I moved into the house, my primary concern was, is this home in the flood zone? And of course, I checked that out, but nobody ever told me. My realtor, the city, nobody ever indicated that this property across the street from me was actually industrial general. In fact, I've learned in this year's saga that a good number of homes in North Lawrence are adjacent to properties zoned as industrial general, that an owner of this kind of property can opt to change usage. And so, when I received news, well, we're gonna put a car lot on that lot, I was told that if the owner had the money and could do that, there was little that I could do to prevent that. There should be required buffer zones between residential and industrial zoned areas, but that's not the case with this particular situation. I thought I was purchasing a house on the edge of Lawrence. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Your three minutes are up.
Oh, okay. Can I buy three minutes more from somebody else?
No, it's not the way it works.
It's not the way that it works. So, can I just have a closing comment?
Yes, go ahead and have a closing.
No homeowner or renter should be surprised one morning to discover a house like this across the street, and that seemingly nothing's going to be done about it. The city collects the benefits from sales and property taxes on our homes. There was an earlier map that showed eight other lots. None of those homeowners have been advised that they too are in the same situation as I am.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
So, we need to have a corrective action on this.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Ted Boyle, North Lawrence Improvement. About a year ago, August, my phone line lit up and people down on the 800 block of Lincoln and Lion said, Ted, you need to come down here. And they had already called Brian Jimenez on codes. As a matter of fact, when I went down there, he was just getting out of his vehicle. And I was totally taken back by this dilapidated mobile home, or whatever you wanna call it, towed in there, and thought it might be just a temporary deal, but it's going on a year now. And, you know, if they'd gone through the right channels and it was a livable mobile home, and it was zoned for that type of situation, well, then that'd be another thing to discuss. But what it is right now, the blighted that it's created in that area, and the residents are just, you know, they're still yanking my phone, so wanna know when that's gonna get removed. So, we'd like to see that removed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Public hearing is open. Other comment?
I'm Bernice Garber, and I'm the president of Doug Garber Construction Incorporated. And the tenant that lives at 801, his, their son had come to me and asked me if he could sell cars off of that lot, and I investigated, and it was properly zoned for selling cars off of. I met with the city, and they had said that mobile homes were allowed in the IG area. I didn't realize that it needed to be site planned, so that was a mistake. I had an engineer and a surveyor working on the property, and the plan is, of course, to make it part of the plan, and it would not look like it looks today. So, I'm in the process of trying to get that completed. But right next door is the Crane Company, and if you could look at the map, there's a lot of RVs and other structures in the area that also are junk cars, things like that, that are right, right behind that property. So, that's what I have to say.
Other public comment? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Soden, second from Commissioner Herbert. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we've conducted the public hearing. Now, we need to consider adopting Resolution Number 7255.
Yeah, I think we need to move forward with the, with the resolution. Seems as though they've gone through the process, given ample opportunity for the property owner to make the situation right, and it's time to, to take care of this safety issue.
I agree.
Original citation was nine months ago, so it's time.
Okay. I'd consider a motion.
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 7255, declaring the exterior premise conditions to be injurious to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and order the owner to remove the mobile home within the specified time, and further direct city staff to abate the violation if the property owner fails to abate as ordered.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Soden, second from Vice Mayor Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Our next item is to receive the bus transfer location analysis, and direct staff as appropriate.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you tonight is the recently completed transit, transfer hub analysis that we did. It was performed after several years of being at a kind of a temporary location at Seventh and Vermont. For those that you, that don't know some of our transit history, we started the transit service in the year 2000. We operated our transfer, our major transfer hub at Ninth and Massachusetts for the most part during that period. We were somewhat evicted out of that area as development continued to occur in and around Ninth and New Hampshire in that area. In 2013, we moved temporarily to Seventh and Vermont for about six months, until we had a transit study, or transit, or study done. So, we're back again. As I say, we've, we've done this once before. This study was done a little bit differently, and what I'm gonna have is Sarah Frost, who's with Trans Systems, who, that's the company that did the workforce. She's gonna come up and guide you through that, and then we'll answer questions after that.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, Mayor, thank you for having us here tonight. So, as Bob said, we started this study about a year ago, July, August. Along with the study team that conducted it, myself, Sarah Frost, I was the project manager. I've had thirteen years of experience doing feasibility studies somewhat similar to this. They all are unique. Additionally, on our team, we have Lisa Coke with Groundswell Consulting. She is actually a former Lawrence resident. She was in charge of the public involvement. She teaches some transportation classes at KU and has also been involved in feasibility studies. And additionally, for some additional transit planning, we had Mark Swope with Transit Tuity. He has over thirty, thirty years of experience, or nearly thirty years of experience, and he's actually also conducted the previous feasibility study that was done here in Lawrence. So, as Bob said, the study purpose, we're really looking to operate a transit system more efficiently, more effectively. Really looking at the importance of the ease of a transfer and where that location would be within the city. We did look at previous planning efforts. I apologize that the font is a little small on this. The Lawrence Transit Center location analysis that was conducted in 2014, we reviewed that, looked at, you know, some spatial analysis and geographic information, demographics that were previously studied. We looked at the 2016 Tiger application, which actually Lisa Coke also prepared that. That was looking at Lot 90 at the University of Kansas for a potential transfer location. Funding did not become available to actually fund that project. And then in 2016, a comprehensive transit operations analysis was conducted, and we also reviewed the information from that. And I'll talk further on that when we look at some of the data that we use to support our location. So, one of the things that we did differently than previous studies is we started with community stakeholder engagement, and not only the public, but also with community leadership, to really get some feedback and put together approach. The first step that we did was last August. That was a public meeting, and we also administered a public survey. That really looked at community goal setting. We were looking at what the public was interested in and having on their site, what they were, as far as amenities go, where they wanted it located, things like that. We administered a second survey in October, and that was really refining our goals and looking at, one of the things that came out of it is that a lot of the public wanted to reduce travel time. So, we wanted to see if that was more important than, you know, buffering from a residential neighborhood. And eighty percent of the respondents said they wanted to reduce travel time. So, really kinda digging in and seeing what some of those trade-offs were if, from the public. Then back at the end of November, we came back after looking at various sites throughout the city. We came back and met again with the public and administered another survey to get their feedback and find out what they thought about the sites that we selected. So, then also throughout the study process, so this was literally through that whole August, November, December timeframe, we did one-on-one meetings with all the commissioners, met with the Lawrence School District, and then private property owners, which I will show you. We have a map of a lot of the properties that we looked at. We met with University of Kansas Endowment, and then other KU entities throughout the study process to get their feedback. So, when we started to, after meeting with the public and learning what, you know, what their needs and wants were, we set our site goals and characteristics. And those really came down to travel time. A lot of people told us, again, they wanted to reduce travel time and thirty, we heard a lot of thirty-minute trips, that being an important option. Centralized location, that would be centralized KU and some shopping districts. Indoor facility, many people, a majority of the public came back to us and said they would like to have some sort of shelter with indoor seating, lighting, and amenities, possibly restrooms. And then fleet operations, how easy would it be to, for transit vehicles to access a site and ingress, egress outside of, out of a site? And then again, outside of residential neighborhoods, is there a arterial buffer, or is there a land-use buffer that would keep the site away from residential areas? Acquisition costs, we looked to see if the property was owned by the city or the university would keep acquisition costs lower. And then ease of constructability, and that was really how much clearing and grubbing would need to be done on a site, grading, possibly eliminating and clearing structures to make the constructability easier. One of the other things, and sorry, this is really small, that we took into consideration was demographic analysis. So, these are densities of the, what are, what can be common transit-dependent populations. On the top left, those are older adults, sixty-five and older. You can see that they're, the dark color is where it's denser, where they reside within the city, and that is in that core area. The next one are the college-age students, and not surprisingly, the dark area is actually surrounding the university. Then we looked at persons with disabilities, and again, that dark core area is central to the area of the city. And then so, Iowa Street runs up and down mostly through the middle of that, to give you a little bit of a reference. And then populations without vehicles. So, the darker area is actually a little bit to the southeast, or I'm sorry, southwest. But there are other dense areas within the core. And then the final is just block groups of lower-income individuals, so households with lower incomes. So, from one of the studies, the, the comprehensive transit operations study identified these transit propensity zones, and that's, so we were really looking at that when also identifying properties to include in our, our study. And the area A is generally in between Iowa and Mississippi, and Ninth and Nineteenth. B is Castled and Tennessee, as our east-west boundary, west-east boundaries, and Sixth and Twenty-third. And then area C is really just outside of all of those areas. So, this is a second map, and this shows the locations that we, the five locations that we ended up studying and kind of their relation to these propensity zones. And we've got A and B, which is Seventh and Vermont, actually the current transfer location. B is just a little bit to the south, and those are both outside in that zone C. Area C is Crestline and Bob Billings Parkway, and that is just in that B, just outside of Zone A. D is Twenty-first and Stewart, or 1941 Stewart, and that is, again, just outside of that Zone A, a little bit to the south. And E is on the very edge of Zone B, and that is Lawrence Avenue and Twenty-third Street. So, this map illustrates, again, it might be a little bit difficult to see, but those dark gray areas are, I think, that ended up being about twenty-two areas that we looked at that could be potential locations. We looked at some retail that could be, you know, reconfigured to a transit facility. So, through our stakeholder engagement, when we met with developers and when we met with private landowners, that's where some of those things got ruled out. Either they were, it was cost-prohibitive to try to even acquire the property, or they were already programmed for another development. So, that's where we really, like, honed in on the five spots that were city-owned, university-owned, and also met the, you know, some of the other criteria that we could move forward. So, with that, and again, there's a lot of words, but I wanna go through kind of all the different locations and some of their pros and cons, and then after that, we will take questions, and I'll, I'll give our final, you know, what our final recommendations were. So, this is Site E, this is Lawrence Avenue and Clinton Parkway. It's not as centrally located. It's, it was the one that was very on the edge of transit propensity Zone B. It could moderately potentially reduce travel times for some transit users. It's large enough. Right now, it's a large parcel. We would, we would be looking at maybe like three to four acres of the larger parcel, so it could accommodate that indoor facility and provide bus maneuverability and access that we're looking at. It is currently owned by Endowment. It is very heavily wooded. There would be a lot of construction, not, I don't wanna say problems, challenges as far as. but challenges as far as clearing and grubbing. And it's also, you know, we identified that it was on the waters of the US location. There's a lot of drainage and wetlands and things that we would have to take into consideration on that site. Also, during the study, we were contacted by the Marvone Meadows Neighborhood Association. And they were heavily opposed to that site as it connects right into their neighborhood drive. This next site is, this is that Lot 5 between Ninth and 10th Street on Vermont. And this is currently, this is next to Wheat Fields. So, it's currently a retail parking lot. It would maintain current travel times. It's only just about a couple of blocks away from the current location. However, it is not centrally located to areas such as shopping and the University of Kansas. If modified, we looked at it, that it could accommodate an indoor facility, but maneuverability would be very challenging. And for to accommodate any kind of growth, we would also have to do some on-street bus stalls. So, that is located outside of residential neighborhoods. And the city owns the property. One of the things that we looked at was developing this as some sort of a multi-use property where maybe there could be transit on the very first floor and do retail and/or parking, well, some parking below, retail above. That would be extremely costly, but it would also incorporate other development options into that location. So, this is the area on the southeast corner of Bob Billings and Crestline Drive. It is somewhat central in relation to the university as it started. It is in propensity Zone B. Again, could reduce travel time. It's large enough that, you know, we would look at three to four acres, again, of a larger parcel, so it could accommodate an indoor facility. There would be adequate access and space for maneuverability of transit vehicles. It is located outside of, primarily outside of residential areas, although there are apartments across the way. It's owned by KU. And the one thing against this site is that the university does prefer developing this site as part of a gateway to West Campus and so not necessarily as a transit facility. This is Vermont Street between Seventh and Eighth. This is actually the current location of where transfers are happening. So, therefore, current travel times would be maintained. Again, it is not as centrally located to those core populations or the university as other locations. And it would not be able to accommodate an indoor facility, which is something that we heard overwhelmingly by the public, that they wanted some sort of indoor shelter with benches and lighting. So, we took that into consideration. It could accommodate some canopies and waiting areas for users. They would use, the transit vehicles would access the site in a sawtooth configuration to allow for a little bit more ease of maneuverability throughout the site. One drawback is we don't know that it could, well, based on this, what it, how it operates now, it could not accommodate future growth in that 10-year period without possibly acquiring maybe some more parking lot room or area to add additional transit bays. So, we're just looking at those seven bays. It is located outside of a residential area. And another concern is pedestrian safety without any future enhancements because we know there's a lot of cross-traffic occurring when people enter and exit the transit vehicles. So, we, the final fifth property is 1941 Stewart. That is, you know, parallel to Iowa and between essentially 19th and 20th Street, 21st Street, a little bit to the south. This site was strongly supported by the University of Kansas. Of the five candidate sites, it is most centrally located and would likely reduce the overall travel time based on the core populations that use transit live generally within that area. It's about a four-acre site, so it could adequately accommodate an indoor facility, no issues with bus movements on-site, opportunities for growth. You see that we've designed, or, you know, schematically designed with eight bays. We could probably add additional. We do recommend that some additional traffic analysis be considered to understand the full impacts of this facility. Also considering that, I believe, there's a 19th Street tunnel going in and there's some other things going in around that area that we would want to analyze. It is located in a residential area. But one of the things we, again, schematically included as a potential ease of vehicles accessing 19th and 21st Street would be a right-in, right-out off of Iowa to keep those vehicles mostly accessing Iowa Street. It is currently owned by KU Endowment. And construction impacts would be some grading of the site as it is a pretty steep site. But there are no current structures on the site. So, that actually gave it a plus or, you know, a step up to some of, to one of the other sites that did have a structure on it. So, our recommendation, based on public input and analyzing these sites, is to do, we know that people are very interested in looking at something downtown. So, we recommend doing some further evaluation of both the Vermont Street site as far as traffic and transit operations go, transit planning, and also the 1941 Stewart Avenue site. And again, further traffic evaluation and transit route planning. So, with that, we would like to take some questions.
So, there's a lot of information here, I know, already. Yeah, and I didn't speak very much. I'm saving your evening for you. There's still a lot of work to do, I think, with these locations. We've done a lot to get to this place. One of these locations, we've kind of looked at the general area once before, so we've done a little bit of work there. There's, we still need to do a lot of work, I think. The Seventh and Vermont location is a location that I do think there's limitations for future use and whether we can grow. Because every time we get overloads on a bus and we go from a 25 to a 30 footer to a 40 footer, we need more space, which if we're limited in space to start, it may limit us in the future. So, I think we need to look at that. 19, or 1941, it really comes down to looking at the traffic again, although we've looked at the traffic in that general area. Now, we have other things going on, the 19th Street projects that are going on there and how this plays into the tunnel underneath 19th Street and how that plays into the Jayhawk path and all that going in. So, I still think there's some work that needs to be done. And with that, we'll stand for questions.
Questions?
I have a question. On page 50 of the report, I don't know if you have that available.
I can go grab it.
Okay. On the PDF, it's actually page 55, but on the report, it's page 50. Yes. So, we got the summary and next steps. And there's the three bullet points. It says, "As part of the future analysis, a program of capital projects could be developed that considers bus transfer locations and stops in the following hierarchy." So, I didn't know if these three bullet points meant that if we did one, we don't do the other two, or if we're doing all three of these perhaps in the future. I didn't understand what you meant by the following hierarchy.
So, I think that would be included in that additional summary, or, sorry, review that we were looking at. I don't think it would, one would preclude another. I think it could include all three, actually.
I think it definitely would.
Definitely, I mean, that's...
What happens most of the time with transit planning is you have to have a place to emanate from. So, you're gonna have to have a transit hub, a major hub. From there, wherever routes cross is where you get secondary locations. That's why it's difficult for us in a study like this to try to find secondary locations because they kind of come about as part of how the routes are restructured. So, then you start getting into, if we come up with a primary hub location and we restructure the routes, then we can figure out where those secondary locations are. So, that next step in this, we would have to go into the secondary.
Well, the third one...
And then the high-capacity stops, what would that be?
The third one is called high-capacity transit stops. So, I feel like we're getting confused. What is a secondary transfer area and what is a high-capacity transit stop? So, a secondary transfer area, it sounds like that's something that kind of pulls over a little bit. While a high-capacity transit stop is perhaps, perhaps just a popular location to switch buses.
That could be one in the same. A secondary transfer location could be a high-capacity stop. So, what you need to do is, there's gonna be transfers. That doesn't mean there's gonna be a lot of people transferring at that location. So, the more people you have there, it becomes a high-density stop. So, you start investing a lot more capital in things and amenities in order to accommodate that.
If we have multiple secondary transfer areas, do we still need the main transfer?
Small systems generally operate with pretty long headways. I mean, we're talking about 30 minutes. Where if you start getting in larger cities, the headways are closer together, the service is closer together. So, you can have people getting off a bus at various places in the city and still be able to get on a bus in a short period of time because the buses are coming so frequent. With small systems, you really have to have this hard transfer opportunity. And that is, if you're coming from Sixth and Walkerusa and going to East Hills Business Park, you don't want somebody to get off the bus coming from Sixth and Walkerusa and have to wait around 15, 20 minutes to take another 20-minute bus ride out to East Hills. You really want, when they get off a bus, it's just like they're just taking a little respite on their trip, they're getting off a bus, getting right on the next one and move. And that's what we call hard transfer. So, you can just get off one, get on the next one, and go. So, small systems tend to work that way because the frequency is so, so long in a lot of the routes. At least a half hour. So, did that, did that kind of get to that?
Quick question on the Seventh and Vermont. When I drove by there today, I kind of looked at it. And as I understand it, as it sits right now, there are seven curbside linear bays on what I think would be, what, northbound Vermont? And then there's one on southbound Vermont. On your conceptual drawing, it appears to me that the base system does not change at all. Is it, would having the transit hub at Seventh and Vermont be effectively status quo?
Pretty much would be status quo. What you see there with the one bus operating across the street is a southbound bus coming out of, out of North Lawrence. So, in order for it to get around and get in the lineup on the east side of the street, it would have to waste a lot of time going around the downtown. So, it's going southbound.
Okay.
We could, we could put it on that northbound side and open it up to eight buses on that side, but we're still losing some time in that process.
But really, I guess, to be a little more frank with you, I suppose my question is, do we get any benefit from spending money on a Vermont Street hub versus what we have now?
Amenities. I mean, I think what you...
But didn't you say there was no room for an indoor facility? There was no cutting down of time?
Right. Well, what we could do is put canopies over it. And that's one of the things I think consultants was saying is at least put a canopy over and give, at least anything coming down from the skies, we could, we could limit that. Could we do anything with amenities? There's no place really to do anything with amenities. So, we are, we are limited to what we can do there. You're correct.
Commissioner, I'd just add to that. You know, we have significant safety concerns in how the status quo Seventh and Vermont site operates. People crossing the street mid-block without pedestrian crossing features and, you know, conflicts of traffic going in and out of the area. So, I don't think without some significant investment in, not just amenities, but infrastructure improvements, you know, making the sawtooth cutouts and pedestrian crossing features, that site, long-term, is not gonna work as it is status quo. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to reshape it. It's gonna have to function a little bit differently.
Well, I'm glad Brandon said that because that is a lot of what the sawtooth gives you is if you have buses that are pulling nose to tail, if they get too tight, which we're very tight in that operation now, sometimes we have to wait for the bus in front to pull out so the bus behind can get out. Sawtooth gives every bus the opportunity to get in and out without having to wait for the bus in front of them. So, it does award us that, that opportunity. Correct.
So, are we looking at it either or on these potential locations?
I would think no matter what happens with a transit hub location, whether it's at Stewart, Bob Billings, Clinton, wherever, we're still gonna have something in the downtown. So, I would say that even, even if we put a hub somewhere else in our community, we're still gonna be looking at a downtown to put probably three buses. One of the things you'll hear a lot of people say in the community is that if we move the transit hub out of downtown, there's not gonna be any service to downtown. And that's just absolutely not true. We're still gonna have, I mean, that's where a lot of people want to go. So, we're still gonna have a lot of service there. We're still gonna have to have the opportunity to get two or three buses to occur, whether it's at this location or some other location in downtown. And where that would be is still a challenge.
Could we have two full bus hubs, one downtown and one elsewhere?
I wouldn't call them two full bus hubs because we wouldn't need the size in downtown. We'd probably need enough space for probably three buses at the most in downtown. But we would need something absolute.
I was kind of surprised there wasn't more of a traffic, traffic study done on some of the locations, given, given the congestion of traffic like on Iowa. I, it's difficult, difficult for me to see being able to have ingress and egress off of Iowa at 19th, between 19th and 21st, given the amount of traffic at certain times of day there.
And I agree. And that's, really, if we're gonna look into the future, we probably need to look at whether the downtown can support what we want to do down there for a long-term, over 10 years. Can it do that? And what does that mean, taking turn lanes and whatever? And especially at Stewart, what are we gonna do with trafficking? And really, that would be kind of the next step in it. I've been kind of saying it this way. We've thrown a dart at a dartboard. We know where the locations are now. Now, we need to start digging in to see what the specifics are about those sites. So, and it's very similar to what we did the last study.
There was a traffic study, wasn't there?
Yeah, but that was a secondary study on the heels of the first. We did the same thing, we threw darts at the board. We got the location. And then we said, "Let's dig in further" and started looking more specifically at sites for traffic, for environmental things, all of those other issues.
Wouldn't, I mean, has, has that area changed enough that we would need to redo that traffic study? I mean, it can't be more than two years old, right?
The difference between the...
I just said the SLT opening. I'm pretty sure Iowa Street is more congested. As an Uber driver, it sure seems that way.
That would change it. But the real thing is, the last thing we were looking at in 1941 Stewart was we were looking to put a traffic signal at Iowa and 21st.
Oh, that's right.
That changes the whole thing. So, this, we're looking at a right-in and right-out, which changes a lot of that traffic pattern. And so, none of that going down 21st, we wouldn't be promoting that at all.
Gotcha.
Could you put that map back up that shows all the locations?
What page was that on? Oh, I think I answered my own question, 21?
I think so.
One thing you said was that Site D was supposedly more centrally located. How, how do you get that? It seems to me Site C is much more centrally located than, especially given the current growth patterns that were seen in Lawrence. That was one of your items you put on there.
Sure. So, the current growth patterns, yes, are to the northwest. However, those aren't necessarily, necessarily the populations that access tran, or use transit. So, Site D is a little bit closer to that Zone A. And it's also essentially just across the street from the new, a lot of the new development happening on campus. So, that is where it's more centrally located than Site C is how we came up with that.
And the other is, if you, if you go, if we go back to the propensity maps, the propensity of ridership, there's a lot more on the east side of town. So, and I know these maps are kind of hard to see.
Yeah.
But, but being located closer to 19th gives us better access to East Lawrence and that side of town where, up at Bob Billings, that puts us in that maze of going through Jayhawk or trying to find a way around to get to the east side of town, so.
Going through, what'd you say, Jayhawk?
Jayhawk Boulevard, yeah.
Going through campus, essentially.
Yeah, because Bob Billings turns into 15th. And then we've got to do all those doglegs and everything to get through to downtown East Lawrence.
I guess I'm feeling like I'm in favor of Vermont Street being the main hub and then going ahead and designating a secondary transfer location on one of these five sites.
Wouldn't it have to be the other way around? Since they said Vermont can't support any of those amenities, the indoor facilities?
Well, it has the library. It's not that we, we're not building a new building that have them, but we do have a library across the street, which is why we needed to raise crosswalk. And people do jump out from between the buses, which is scary to drive on that stretch of street.
Well, we're still asking questions here.
Yeah, there's still more questions.
Do we have more questions?
Well, that's my question, I guess, is that if we were to designate a main traffic, main transit hub, can we go ahead and start discussions about a secondary site? That's my question. Whether that's to them or to you. Whether that's to them or to you, everyone can answer. Everyone can pitch in.
Who wants to answer? I, I go back to what I was saying earlier, that you really have to start with that primary site, and then it's according to what your route structure is to where those secondary sites are. So even if we would designate a site tonight and say this is the site, Seventh and Vermont may give us an opportunity to look at, at a secondary site faster because, but we're still going to have to do probably some restructuring to try to fine-tune what we're doing. So I think we're still a little ways off from getting to that secondary site or other high-activity locations. I think it's still-
I was trying to get back to that graph that you have in your report. My computer seems to be locked up. Where you have the dots. Could you pull that up?
Hold on, so we can put it under there.
You're making me do this hard stuff.
Sorry.
Is that it?
It's upside down, but that's it?
It is upside down.
Yeah, that's definitely-
Is this the one we're talking about?
Yeah, it's on page forty-eight of the report.
There it is.
So I had a couple of questions, but it seems like they scored awfully close together. Several of them.
Yeah, they-
There didn't seem to be a lot of difference. So on the, this nineteen forty-one Stewart one, it says that it's, since they, on the outside of residential neighborhood, so the circle means that it is not outside of a residential neighborhood.
And then we recognize that we know of all of the sites closest to residential.
Okay. And in the Seventh Vermont one, you said that it is outside of residential neighborhood. Seems like we have a lot of residential activities going on in downtown Lawrence right now with the growth of several of our buildings. So I was kind of, I just don't understand why you would say it was outside.
Sure. I mean, I think we were looking in more of the sense of the traditional single-family home, not multi-hous, you know, multi-housing units.
Could you explain the difference between travel time between the Bob Billings one and the Stewart one? One's half-filled and one's full.
So again, that just goes to the fact that Bob Billings Parkway, again, terminates into the University of Kansas. So we looked at the site that's on nineteen forty-one Stewart is, you know, just a couple blocks away from Twenty-third Street. It's also on a major arterial of Iowa. So it does impact travel time, just even, even though they seem that close, they're still not adjacent to Nineteenth Street and arterial, Twenty-third Street and arterial, and then Iowa Street. So that's where we gave the nineteen forty-one Stewart a little bit higher of a score.
Is it Nineteenth Street? Is it, what type of a street is that? I mean, not Nineteenth, Bob Billings.
Um, what's Bob Billings?
It's a major.
It, it could be designated as the main arterial, but it still terminates and does not travel all the way through the city of Lawrence without going through campus. Again, adding, would add travel time to the down, to downtown or the east side. So that's-
So one of the things, I don't know if it's, if it was clear in the report or what we've been saying, is that we narrowed this down to five locations. Three of those locations were KU-controlled, either by endowment or state-owned property. The site that you're talking about, C at Bob Billings and Crestline, is a state-owned property. The last study we did in this study both came up with that location. And both times, the university said, we have alternative plans for that. And they have kind of pulled that off the table both times. So it, when it comes down to university property first, if it's state property, that means it's probably going to be a legislative action that has to go to the P. If it's endowment, endowment is there to serve the betterment of the university. So it's, land is being controlled by endowment, and they can use it for the betterment of the university.
So why, why did you even recommend this spot if it's, the property's not even available?
Well, we, we had to narrow it down to, to the best locations. And then we went and sat down with them after we narrowed it down to the locations on campus and talked to them about what properties they saw as the best location in their plans. One of the reasons why Stewart keeps coming up is in their master plan, their long-range plan, it shows for some kind of transit center in that location. So they, I think they just kind of default into, that, that's where the plan was, and they need, they're looking for some kind of, you know, entrance way into West Campus. And I think that's what they're expecting to do at Crestline and, and Bob Billings. And that's why it keeps kind of shut down.
So the university wants to have it on Stewart. Can you say exactly why they want to have that there?
I can't speak to, to why they want it there. I, I do know that why they don't want it at Bob Billings is because of that entrance way into West Campus and its state-owned property.
Well, your report says that the university strongly supports the nineteen forty-one Stewart location, and you can't tell me why they strongly support it?
All I can tell you is we sat down with their campus planning individuals, and I don't know if Quiz, who's here from KU, if he could address any of this at all. But when we went to them with those three properties, that's the piece that they, or the site that they designed.
Any other questions? Okay, let's do public comment.
Hello again. Lance Fay here. I'm speaking on behalf of the Lawrence Public Transportation Advisory Committee this time. I'm also a daily bus rider and pedestrian. At our meeting last Monday, we reviewed the analysis and we discussed the, the merits and challenges of each of the sites. And we voted to recommend that, you know, that you accept the transit study and consider the next steps forward on two of the sites, the two that we've been discussing, being the Seventh and Vermont and the nineteen forty-one Stewart Avenue site. We, in our discussion, had a somewhat of a preference for the Stewart site because it does offer more of an opportunity for growth and for the facilities that we would need to have the, the long-term growth and functionality of the system. It seems like it was also going to be the one that would have the most positive impact on travel times, seemed to be the two things. And as you mentioned, University of Kansas seemed to be in favor of that site. We discussed the downtown options quite a bit. And, and as it's been mentioned, there would still be some services that connect downtown as well as other areas in the city where, you know, ridership occurs. And so really, at this point, there is some more traffic analysis that would need to be done or you, land use analysis. And we recommend that City Commission consider that with those two sites in mind. And again, we are kind of looking especially as far as accommodating growth and travel times, I'd like to look very seriously at that Stewart Avenue site. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Lance.
About the bus hub, it's-
Drew, you wanted to give us your name, please?
Drew.
Thank you.
We help people with disabilities and they, they, they use the bus to get around and off a lot. And if you guys, if they plan on moving it to nineteen forty-one Stewart or, because we have consumers that use the bus to get from point A to point B, that we, that we, they can come, they come see us and we help them with getting transportation. We can give them like bus maps and help them get to, from point A to point B.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Kevin Kelly. I live at sixteen thirty-three West Nineteenth Terrace. I'm on the Schwagler Board. At our last meeting, we talked about this study, and we aren't sure why Site D, nineteen forty-one Stewart Avenue, was chosen as preferred site over Site C, the southeast corner of Bob Billings Parkway and Crestline Drive. Each site scored the same, the analysis, at five and a half circles. And taking a closer look, it's not clear why Site D was rated as highly as it was. For travel time, the study concludes that Site C would potentially reduce travel time in Zones A and B, but not C. It says Site, Site D would likely reduce travel times in Zone A and B, but not C, but there's no attached data analysis supporting this claim. These sites are one mile apart, both like, located in the same zone of travel, both adjacent to several major routes to KU and elsewhere. Some unclear why there's a difference in the score. For ease of constructability for Site D, the study says construction impacts would include grading of the site due to its substantial grade changes across the property. The half-circle criteria for this category states, site would require moderate enhancements such as grading and utility upgrades for this use and/or permitting. It also doesn't mention the several trees on the Stewart lot. Site D should be scored with a half-circle, not a full circle, due to substantial grade challenges on site. Changing the score down to a half-circle would put, put Site C ahead. The only clear and significant difference between the sites, according to the criteria, is in relation to residential neighborhood. Site C is not adjacent to, at all to a neighborhood and scored, scored as a full circle. Site D scores an empty circle, meaning it's buffered from residential areas on less than three sides of the facility. With that, I will pass the mic to Edna, my neighbor. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Good evening. My name is Edna Mosher, and I live at twenty forty-three Ostal. And I am also on the Board at the Schwagler Neighborhood Association. Thank you for requesting the hub study. We really appreciate it. Another significant difference we'd like to point out between Sites D and C is cost. The study estimates that Site C would cost one point three five seven million dollars, while Site D with access from Iowa would cost one point eight two five million. This is a significant difference of roughly half a million dollars, especially with the city recently struggling with its budget. The study also concludes that there is a need to determine traffic impacts on Crestline for Site C. But for Site D, there is no mention of traffic impacts or the need to determine them. Iowa is a major arterial roadway, and everyone needs to understand the impact of additional traffic on that road and the impact to Nineteenth and Twenty-first, which already have an overload of traffic during the school year. If Site D is still to be considered, we would like a traffic impact analysis for both sites, C and D. While Iowa and Bob Billings are both four-lane roads with periodic stopping at traffic lights, we believe whichever street has fewer trips per day would be more suited to handle an increase. Throughout the study, beginning with page two, and clearly stated in feedback from the constituents of Lawrence, the bus hub was to be located outside a residential neighborhood, and there was to be no negative impact to a residential neighborhood. A location at Site D does not fit this requirement. The Schwagler neighborhood has already been negatively impacted on the north side by traffic, lighting, and noise with the development over the last two years. Site D would negatively impact this neighborhood on the west side with the same exact issues and at the issue of assuring security and safety for all in the area. While the KU Site Council and the firm conducting the study are not responsible for the safety and welfare of the people and property of the Schwagler neighborhood, that responsibility partially belongs to you, Mayor, and Commissioners. And there are other options available that do not negatively impact a Lawrence neighborhood. With that, here's my neighbor, Tracy.
Hi. My name is Tracy McCool, and I live at fourteen oh two West Twenty-first Street. I am a member of the Schwagler Neighborhood Association, and I have some pictures to show you guys. So as you can see here, Iowa Street is our busiest road. It comes in as a highway, and then it becomes a major arterial, while Bob Billings is a minor arterial and has significantly fewer trips per day. We believe that it can better handle the increase from the buses. During rush hour, let's see. We'll start with the eight AM photo. These are photos just taken this last Friday. We didn't have a whole lot of time. And they are taken not during school, like, school is out for the summer, and this is as bad as it is right now. So during rush hour, traffic can back up to the light at Nineteenth and Iowa, sorry, from that light, all the way to Twenty-first Street, well past the location at nineteen forty-one Stewart. So this is a picture at eight o'clock AM. And... This is one from noon, from the other side. And then this is one at five. And you can see just how far back that traffic can go. And school is not in session. When the students come back, it will be worse. For all of that, we just would like for you guys to keep in mind the location on Bob Billings. It sounds like it may not necessarily be an option if KU doesn't want to work with us, but that is definitely one that I think we need to look into. At the very least, we need to do some traffic analysis and find out what's going to be necessary. The, the plans to just have an entry and exit off of Iowa, I don't think are going to work, not the way that, that it's been explained. Let's see. The, the Bob Billings location does meet the needs of the project, and it is a central location. It is very close to this other one that we're looking at. It is the cheapest of the feasible options and has the lowest impact by far on the residential neighborhood. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tracy.
My name's Sean Trentholm. I live at three forty-two Indiana. Prior to that, I lived at eighteen thirty-three West Twenty-first Terrace for seventeen years. These are all my old neighbors. I am still fully invested in the neighborhood. For the last thirty-seven years, I've owned and operated the West Coast Saloon at twenty-two twenty-two Iowa Street. In two thousand and four, I purchased the building that it's in, and last week, my wife and I opened up our coffee shop next door. Several years ago, well, it was two thousand and four, the appraiser gave me a good news, bad news. The good news is, Sean, you're buying a building, then, at that time, was on Kansas Highway Ten, four-lane highway, and United States Highway fifty-nine, four-way, four-lane highway going north and south. And it had the highest traffic count of any intersection in Lawrence, and that's pretty good news. The bad news is ingress and egress- The bad news is ingress and egress is bad. Okay? We've got easement rights with the strip mall next to us that houses CC's Pizza and Cork and Barrel and the old Hastings. However, when Twenty-third Street intersection, Twenty-third and Iowa Street intersection was redone, you can no longer turn east because a, a completed median was put in on Highway ten, Twenty-third Street. So now anybody, both from my building and the strip mall behind me, can either turn west onto Twenty-third Street or out of the entrance at my parking lot. They can go north or south on Highway fifty-nine. However, also in that, a double turn lane was put on Clinton Parkway to move more cars faster. So now there's two lanes turning left, going northbound onto Iowa Street. And what that has done is it's made it most of the time impossible to exit my building going south. So you pretty much either go north on Iowa Street or you go west on Twenty-third. So I, I don't know how many millions of dollars got spent on the intersection and I, I wish the study, somebody would have talked to me because I got a little bit of experience with buses. We do a bus to KU basketball games. It's only sixteen times a year. Used to leave half hour before tip-off. Now we gotta leave forty minutes before tip-off because it takes so long to be able to get the bus going north onto Iowa Street. So I just ask you, how many times a day is that bus going to go turn right in and turn right out at that access that's being proposed? You're going to create a bottleneck, which is, I mean, it's basically going to do what it does now. It blocks my, my drive and all the buses pulling out, they're coming from a dead stop going uphill. So I think.
Thanks, Sean.
You're, you need to talk about the traffic now, not wait for a later study.
Thank you. Other public comment?
My name's Randy. I live at eighteen thirty-two West Twenty-First Street Terrace and I noticed that nobody brought up the fact that they want to put this on Stewart Avenue where we have a fire station and an emergency station. Any study will show you, eight out of ten times, those fire trucks will use Twenty-First Street over Nineteenth Street. How can you get fire trucks out to an area if they're fighting buses that are backing up traffic? It just, it makes no sense. But I'm just curious as to why no one has addressed the fact that there is a fire station there and they're, they're on emergencies.
That's it, Mr. Herbert.
Greetings, Commissioner. My name is Eric Bloom. I live at four five oh five Turnberry. Um, up till two years ago, I spent about twenty years living in a Schwagler homeowner's district. Some of what KU has done over the last years just drove me out. That was all there was to it. Now I'm not their neighbors, but I've got their back. Um, I'm here today to say that, um, when they're speaking up, I hope we can listen. Um, a lot of our minds, history I have learned with, uh, the city is that Charles Souls is a really competent leader. He's done great. Um, I appreciate some of the feedback we've gotten from the city. Um, but when it comes to, uh, transit, I don't know if it's been quite as, um, successful. I want to think about future viability. This has been a while to even get to where we're at now. And if it's going five years in the future, is a transit system really going to be as popular as an Uber system? Let's be honest, I have dozens of tenants and those tenants don't ride the bus. They are going to ride an Uber. That's what they do now. They can do it twenty-four hours a day. They don't need to worry about having a public bathroom. Um, they do it at the bar and they get picked up directly where they're at and they go to where they need to be. Um, I think that the ridership is, it, there was a quote earlier today, I believe I heard, just because we spend a lot of time on it, doesn't mean we need to do it. I think you said that, Mr. Herbert. And, uh, if there's a million dollars to be saved, maybe there's a million dollars to be saved and let private business take over some of the, tasks that they've already done, actually. Right now, I think if there was a study to tell me how many Uber transportation rides are a day versus a trans, transit rides per day, I'd be pretty interested to hear that. And I know that they can go any part of town and I think that's a very important thing to know about. I actually adopted a, uh, I'm an early adopter of an electric vehicle. I think that, uh, if we have a transit system, uh, maybe we could spend one point three million dollars on getting our city to be fully electrified so that we know where the buses in the future are going to be able to hook up to electric stations. And, uh, they're just going to be coming back to you for money to upgrade the transit system so that the new buses that go out, the diesel ones will be, now we need two million dollars to upgrade to electrification. I don't know if it's needed. I think that there's a future thinking that we need to do to see if any of this is really actually needed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Hello, my name is Phyllis Ferrer. I, uh, do not live in the Schwagler neighborhood. I live in, um, Sunset Hill neighborhood and I am a frequent bus rider, bicyclist, pedestrian. I also recently have, um, been appointed to serve on, uh, the PTAC. So I should say that I'm a member of PTAC, although Lance has already represented the group's opinion. I would like to point out a couple of things that, um, are, well, reinforce what Lance has said about needing to move forward and, um, getting a, a central hub developed so that we can see where the other hubs are, see whether the, um, how much reorganization needs to be done with the routes and so on. And I feel for people who, um, are saying that we cannot allow, uh, or we don't want to allow our city hub to impact a neighborhood because that, that term has been used consistently in a negative way. I would love for us to be an enlightened community where the nearness, the proximity to a hub is a selling point for our neighborhood. I personally know that people my age who are doing more and more walking need to be, want to be near a, a hub that can get you to any part of the city in thirty minutes. It is an asset to a neighborhood to have access to a hub. So just want to put a different twist on that impact to a neighborhood because many of us who are going to depend more and more on public transportation as our city becomes urbanized, need to see that as an asset rather than a defect of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Other public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission.
We know I'm looking at all these sites and, um, I'm having a really hard time with the Site D, I think it is, Stewart Avenue one. So when I went through the list of the items that were listed in the report as the most important when determining the feasibility of a transit, transfer location, one of those items on the list was exactly what was a problem at Stewart. It's the residential, that's supposed to be outside of a residential area. That was the goal, but if you put it at Stewart, it was the only one on the list that was within the residential area. So I really struggle with the idea of putting it, um, in a location that were, that does not meet the goals that were set out by this study. And I think the location on Bob Billings is actually, would be more conducive to meeting all the criteria, or most of the criteria set forth in that list. So I would, I, I don't think I could support the Stewart Avenue one. The downtown one, I think, I would like to see two, one, the downtown one, I think we need to keep downtown. Then also have one out in the locations, but I am more in favor of the Bob Billings location. I mean, I believe, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, that you had indicated at one time that sixty percent of the ridership is KU students? Is that correct?
Yeah, there's about, um, we have about three million passengers here in our service. We have about a million, a million and a quarter are city-specific. The rest are university.
So it would seem to me that, you know, we would want to, KU would want to work with us a little better on this than, than indicate, tell us where they have to, where they want us to go. So, uh, I mean, that's my thought on it is, is one of the main criterias in this neighborhood is that it was, you know, as far as residential neighborhoods, it wasn't on, on the list. So I can't support the Stewart Avenue location.
For, for me, one of the issues is, is going to be reducing transit times. When I met individually with the group, uh, that was, that was a key issue for me. I, I didn't have a specific geographic area that I had in my mind as where it needed to go. Uh, was, was hoping to remain open-minded to, to any location at all, but ultimately, a hub serves no purpose if it doesn't actually reduce times, if it doesn't actually improve the system. And one of the things that I saw on all those pages of analysis was location after location. It talked about, well, we could possibly put it here. Doesn't seem like there's any real purpose of putting it here, but I guess we could. Uh, and, and so, uh, you know, my, uh, my advice, I guess, in all of this would be, uh, whatever we narrow it down to needs to be a location that actually has a purpose to being built there other than to just spending this giant reserve fund that we have in transit. Specifically, uh, looking at the Seventh and Vermont, I, I wasn't overwhelmed with, with the pros, uh, at that location. There seemed to be a whole lot of status quo. Yes, we're going to move to Sawtooth for, for, for safety, but the way I look at that is we know it's a bad location for public safety, so if we kind of turn it a little bit, maybe we can make it a less bad location for public safety. Uh, I think ultimately, if we're going to go forward with a hub, it needs to do two things. It needs to cut down on transit times, um, which will enable more ridership. Uh, you know, Eric, I think you've got a good point that a lot of people are moving to Uber, but I think the reason a lot of people are moving to Uber is not because it's the wave of the future, but because transit hasn't done a good enough job of maintaining, uh, ridership times that make transit convenient. If we are going to get transit to a place where it's an actual option other than a last option, it has to be a convenience. And cutting down on ridership times is how you make it a convenience and is how you make it to be a place where we're going to see improved ridership numbers from people other than, than just students. Uh, and so, uh, personally, I, I don't think Seventh and Vermont is an ideal location. Like I said, the first thing it has to do is cut down on, on transit times. The second thing it has to do is, it has to be able to do, which Lance Fahy talked about was, it has to be able to accommodate growth. Uh, we're a community that's constantly growing and we have to future-proof the things that we do. And if we're building a transit for the current capacity of transit, we've already made a huge mistake. So when we make this decision, it's got to be able to accommodate growth and it's got to be able to cut back on, on times. And I, I personally, based on the analysis I read, don't think the Seventh and Vermont location does either of those two things.
Jennifer?
So, um, a lot of the comments sounded like R2V2. Um, so admittedly, I only heard probably half to two-thirds of, of, uh, the public comment and I'm sorry for that. Um, what I heard of Vice Mayor Larson's and Commissioners, uh, Herbert's statements, you know, I, I think that they're bringing to the table the questions that I had um, and largely agree with, um, many of the statements that I heard there.
Thank you. Leslie?
Sounded like she cut out. I wasn't sure she was done.
She'll come back if she needs to.
She's waiting it over.
Um, well, like I mentioned before, I was wanting to do safety improvements to Vermont Street and this stretch, you know, three years ago. So I'm really excited about safety improvements to Vermont Street. So I would love to spend that money on there regardless. I suppose, um, what Commissioner Herbert was getting at, that's why I was feeling like if we go ahead and selected a hub, if like such as Vermont Street, if we could go ahead and talk about what the secondary place would be, something that's perhaps less impactful wherever it goes, costs less money on top of that. Um, of course, I'm also in favor of having, um, more benches or covered stops up and down the city. You know, that's where I'd like to, to put our money at. So, um, I was never really excited about putting money into a building itself, but I am really excited to improve streets. So my, I'm still with Vermont Street by the library. I think that's a good, it's a good mashup.
Okay, I, uh, I concur. I'd like to develop the Vermont Street site with some amenities. Uh, and I appreciate the, uh, hospitality that the library has shown to the bus riders. I think that's a wonderful thing. They were unusual in that they actually did what Phyllis is talking about, is they said, we want the bus hub. I do have a couple of questions to follow up on this. How many buses are we talking about going in and out of Iowa Street with that, um, ingress, egress, right turn, right out, right in, right out?
See if I brought some of that with me. Looks like we would have about nine buses coming in and out of there. And that's just basically taking the route structure we have now and trying to adapt it.
So that'd be every half hour?
Yes.
Okay. And how many buses would be going and other, not on Iowa Street, but otherwise?
Uh, it looks like we would have about, uh, five coming in on Stewart from Nineteenth. And of those going in off of Iowa, it looks like six would be coming northbound on Iowa and, uh, three, maybe four coming in from, coming southbound on Iowa. But I say, I, I temper that with, this is based on our existing route structure and just kind of moving that node over to there and seeing what would happen.
So, how would you do a southbound bus on Iowa?
That would be the one question that we still have about that. And, and it goes back to some of the comments about the fire station is, uh, we have been talking to, to the fire chief about how to get in and out of there uh, and how we would not limit their ability to get in and out.
Yeah.
So we don't want to clog up and we have big vehicles, they have big vehicles, they always have the right of way. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we cleared the way for them. So one of the ways that we're, we're actually talking about after this, this study that we've been talking about internally is the ability on a southbound bus to make a left-hand turn in also. If you maintain a center turn lane, to be able to turn left-hand into there. Could be problematic, but, but that's part of what a traffic study might award us, is that opportunity to look at that.
Um, there is a fire station right there by Seventh and Vermont. But it has its ingress, egress off of Seventh Street, Eighth Street, I'm sorry, Eighth Street, not on the, the street that we'd be using for the, the buses. Do you see?
Right.
Uh, similar or lesser concerns for that?
Uh, no, we really don't. And, and we haven't had any real issues that I know of. I mean,
Well, you're not going on the same street generally.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
And, and as was stated earlier, uh, and the fire chief will say this too, is most of the time they'll use Twenty-First Street to come out because they have lights and sirens and they can come out anywhere they want.
Right.
They don't necessarily like going through Nineteenth because of the congestion that's usually there. So they try to get out of Twenty-First. It's an easy access.
So what kind of expansion would you consider if, I mean, if this occurrence is the nine in and out every half hour off of Iowa Street? If we expanded, what would you see?
Part of it depends on restructuring the service. And that's why I keep tempering this with saying if we take the existing service and we just kind of move that, that centroid over to there. But when we go restructuring the service, and I'll give you an example of, of Route eleven. Route eleven right now goes from Thirty-first and Iowa to downtown. It wouldn't go from Thirty-first and Iowa to downtown. It'd go Thirty-first and Iowa to this location, say. So then that kind, that starts changing the number of buses and, and, and where those buses are serving. So it's really a hard one to get at and I, I wish I could give you those answers.
Well, I appreciate you, I appreciate you helping me out with this, but I got to say, I'm really concerned about putting buses directly into a hub off of, you know, that red line primary arterial through, through the center of town. And And likewise, if you don't do that, I'm concerned about putting all those buses through the neighborhood. I gotta say, I'm disappointed that KU's not here. I mean, I asked the question of you, but they're not here to tell us.
Right.
And, and I think they knew this was on the agenda. You know, I'm, I'm really disappointed, because I think that this study is really excellent, because it provides a viable alternative to what we were just talking about. So, thank you, Bob, I, I appreciate it, and, and I gotta say, I, I am with, you know, Commissioner Soden, and I think Vice Mayor Larson, on the idea that we need to go ahead with some amenities at Vermont Street, but I say, let's go forward with Billings.
I do really think that we need to look at Iowa Street regardless of what we do bus-wise, because it is really bad now. A lot of times when I drive Uber, I'm driving kids from maybe the engineering building, which is on 15th Street, inside of campus, to behind Walmart, to those apartments back there. And sometimes I'll drive Uber for two or three hours, and most of that will be spent on Iowa. It's, it's terrible during the day, so. I don't know if Uber's contributing to that, 'cause they're not taking the bus, or what's going on with that, but we, we, we really need to look at Iowa, and I don't know if we need to perhaps get the signals moving better, like we did for 6th Street and 23rd Street, or what we need to do.
Quick question. If, development of a, of a hub at 7th and Vermont, based upon the, kind of the preliminary sketches you've done, would you say that that would make the transit system operate more efficiently?
No.
Would you say that it will make the transit system operate more effectively?
No.
Okay, I wanna read the study purpose. "The Lawrence Transit conducted an analysis to identify locations where bus transfers can be made to allow the transit system to operate more efficiently and effectively. The man we pay to run our bus system just told you that the location three of you have identified is your choice to do neither of those things." That concerns me.
Well, I see it more as, we need to have a better idea of the secondary transfer center. It's not that, the main hub. That's why my first question had to do with that hierarchy of three bullet points, and if those were mutually exclusive to each other, or if we're supposed to do all three of those, 'cause I would prefer to do all three of those things. Did I say that was on page 50? I feel like I said it was on page 50. So, that's, that's why I wanted to, to kickstart the conversation of, how can we use a secondary transfer site somewhere to more, to make the system more effective as to how it is now with the main hub at the library? So I, I hear what you're saying, but I guess I've already gone past that.
I just guess I don't understand why we sanctioned a second study to tell us the same thing the first one did, if we're not gonna listen again.
Well, I was part of the commission that turned that one down a few years ago, so
With all due respect, Commissioner Herbert, I'm gonna, first of all, you're saying all three of us chose that. I actually liked the Bob Billings location, and Bob, or I can't remember who said earlier that there's gonna be something on Vermont Street regardless of what we do, there's gonna be bus service. So to say that we chose only that one, that's wrong, okay?
Okay.
So I'm in favor of actually having service downtown as well as on Bob Billings.
Do we need to make a motion, or are we directing staff, or what are we doing?
The action was to receive.
And direct staff.
Mayor, if I may?
You may.
Maybe you guys should propose this. I mean, I hear the commissioner saying Bob Billings may be a location, and, and you're asking me questions about why they support Stewart instead of Bob Billings. Maybe give us an opportunity to go back to the university and talk to them about Bob Billings again.
I think that would be a really good idea, Bob.
And that would give us another opportunity to, to look at this with secondary locations and everything.
I, I, I think the two locations is a great idea. I like Vermont, I like Billings. That's the deal.
We have to maintain bus service downtown.
Yeah.
We just got too many citizens that rely on that in, in the core of our city. We have to have something downtown.
There's another voice that's being very quiet. Jennifer, we wanna make sure that you have an opportunity to participate in this discussion.
I appreciate that. I feel like the quality of sound I'm experiencing kind of prohibits me from participating in any kind of effective way. Again, like I'm saying, I think that the commissioner's guidance and the, kind of the topics that we're addressing are the topics that we need to be talking about when we're receiving something and giving staff direction, and I apologize that I don't have anything more concrete to, kinda, add to the conversation, just based on what I can and can't hear.
Well, I think if we're going back to KU to have discussions with them, I think asking them, okay, what if we have a secondary transfer center, something less intrusive than a major hub, if perhaps that might open up their playbook, I guess you might say, to other locations of what they might think might work.
Yeah, I mean, I see, I don't see these bus hubs, or at least the one that would be out in the central part of Lawrence, as being this building, this brick and mortar type building. I'm seeing it more like I see in cities where it's just more of awnings, you have a restaurant, restroom facility. Obviously, you'd need to have that, but I don't, I don't wanna invest a ton of money into brick and mortar. This is a transfer.
Right, yeah. As long as it has a bathroom, that's what I was concerned about.
I guess the question would be, have we provided sufficient direction for staff at this point? Brandon, why don't you jump in?
Well, I, I did just wanna offer a point of clarification, maybe, and Bob or Sarah jump in and correct me if I'm wrong about this, but about the issue of secondary hubs, each of those locations that are listed, I guess with the exception of 7th and Vermont, which is currently the, the central hub or the main hub, each of those actually already function as cross-connection points, and so there are multiple buses there. So I think maybe what, what the study is recommending is, is just expanding the amenities there. In terms of next steps, I think we've got a pretty clear understanding of the expectation, and we'll go back to KU and, and meet with them, as well as maybe re-engage their planning committee a little bit in that process, and, and take the message to them, and see if we can get some progress on the alternative location over there at Bob Billings and Crestline. I think they, they did, you know, to KU's credit, to their planning committee's credit, we did have a good conversation with them about each of those locations on KU properties. I, I think that they did give careful evaluation to it, but I think it would be very helpful, if they are going to be opposed to it, to at least provide the commission with a little bit more clarity about why. So we'll, we'll be back with that.
And, you know, there's one thing that I think they should remember, I think we should all remember, and that is, that Mayor Amick offered to work with them to locate a transfer hub in the central district, which is proximate to the assets that they have built, and may be part of the reason that they wanna have it located. So, we have offered to work with them, and frankly, the university turned Mayor Amick down. Sheldon?
I would just offer that we can talk to the planning committee, but you have an opportunity to speak to persons higher placed in that university, and I'd suggest that you express your opinions to them as well.
And I would like to say that I appreciate your efforts in making those conversations possible. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'd like to take another break for five minutes before we go into the next. Thank you all.
Who's reading all of those numbers? 'Cause it's not me. Just say that now.
A smorgasbord of ordinances.
I'm not, I'm not volunteering to do that one.
Okay, Brandon, number five.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mayor Commissioners, Brandon McGuire, Assistant to the City Manager, for the record. I, I will be brief. I didn't, didn't expect us to be, to this point, the agenda this early in the evening, actually, so I prepared my statements, so that I could get through it pretty quickly, but that'll be to the benefit of us all, hopefully. This item before you is about the Municipal Services and Operations Department, and this is a proposal that we presented to, to merge the Public Works and Utilities Department, and it was presented back at the April 10th work session to the commission. You all expressed support for the merger, and since that time, we've been working to prepare the next steps. As, as we discussed at the work session, step one involves a number of necessary operate, authorizations for the formal creation of the department. So this requires changes to the city code. City Code Chapter 1, Section 212, authorizes the commission to establish the administrative departments of the city, as the public business may demand, and as provided by state statutes. So that's why these 24 ordinances are presented to the city commission, because this is, this is your authority pursuant to our city code. The code includes numerous references to the Public Works and Utilities Departments and those department directors. Those provisions pertain to the processes, the procedures, practices, regulations, rules, permitting functions of those departments, as well as their administrative authority. Several ordinances that are needed to support the merger are presented on, on the agenda tonight, like I said, 24 of those. The, the result of adoption of these ordinances will be that they do repeal all city code references to the present Public Works and Utilities Department, and they replace all of those references with the terms Municipal Services and Operations Department, and Municipal Services and Operations Department Director. The MSO, of course, is the new name of the, of the proposed merged department. The ordinances also do include some limited revisions to a few existing minor typographical errors and some obsolete references, such as the Assistant City Manager of Administrative Services. We no longer have that as an act, as an actual position in the city, we just have two Assistant City Managers. The proposed ordinances do not address any additional policy changes beyond establishing the department and authorizing the department, as well as making those name changes to the department and to the department director. And I emphasize that, I know I'm being kinda redundant, but some of these articles, you know, the way that we, we repeal and replace or amend city code, we do it by article, and I know at least one of the articles is 50 pages long, it comes from the Land Development Code. So, I, I just wanted to make sure that there is a level of comfort here about what is actually going to be accomplished, and those strike-through red line drafts are provided for the commission. So as I said, the result of adopting the ordinances is that we create the, we formally create the MSO department, and we merge the Public Works and Utilities Department into that, into that operation. We do feel that this aligns well with this city commission's strategic plan, and with your critical success factors. I, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that these ordinances represent a tremendous amount of work, and I'm grateful for the effort of Toni and, and her office and her staff, as well as both of the management teams of the Public Works and Utilities Departments. They've, they've come together very nicely, and done a lot of heavy lifting so far. There's a lot more work to do, if the commission does continue to support this direction, and we do pledge to come back to the commission, and to the employees, and to the customers, and the citizens, and our business partners, as we go through this process and maintain as effective a level of communication as possible. So, that's, that's the extent of my remarks this evening, and I can stand for questions if there are any.
Questions for Brandon.
Did I hear you say there's no longer gonna be your job title?
No. That was an example to an obsolete reference that was cleaned up as, as part of these ordinances.
Okay.
The administrative code lists a number of positions, and assigns residency requirements to those positions, and those are the members of the executive team. And so one of those is the Assistant City Manager of Administrative Services. We no longer have an Administrative Services Department, although that's something that we may receive a proposal on at, at some point in the near future. But as it stands, Diane is the Assistant City Manager, and Casey is the Assistant City Manager, so we don't have that, that particular position. So, that was just an example of some of the, the cleanup that's being done through these ordinances.
Okay, so what, what is your title now?
Assistant to the City Manager.
Okay, so we still have that. Okay.
Yeah.
That's where I was getting confused at.
Hopefully. The budget is yet to be
We're not getting rid of Brandon, how is this? Okay.
The reality is, we probably should go through these ordinances, all of them on a periodic basis, and clean up things like that, that sometimes get overlooked, you know, in the, in the process of just moving in.
So to make sure we're keeping you, though.
Yeah, it was very enlightening to find some of the old historical references, not just to positions, but to past practices, but we did, as much as possible, just try to keep it, these ordinances limited to just those name changes. As Tom calls it, the name and address change.
Questions from Brandon, more questions. Okay, thank you, Brandon. Public comment on this issue? Okay, let's bring it back to the commission. Comments?
This is the next step in this whole process of, of part of our strategic plan.
Sherry, for your purposes, does the motion need to include every?
You don't have to.
All right, well, then I would make a motion that we adopt on first reading, all of the listed ordinances.
Second.
We have a motion. Commissioner Herbert, second, from Commissioner Soden, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. That may be a record. Okay, thank you. Commission items.
I got one. God bless Bad for still sitting back there. He mentioned the single-use plastic bags, which I'm curious about, and also, I thought I'd heard that the Sustainability Advisory Board was looking into that, so I'd like to get an update from them on what, where they're at with that.
They were looking at that as well as the plastic straws, I think.
I don't know.
I felt like that was an issue that, right as Eileen made her transition, maybe got lost. Lost, 'cause I feel like that was, they were doing a lot of work with that right before she took her new position.
Yeah, maybe that's what happened. So let's see where that stalled out, and
We'll look into it.
So, I guess we're, do we need a motion on that?
Well, my, mine isn't so much for a future agenda item, but just in the manager's report, at least, just to get an update. And if they voted that they don't wanna follow through on that, then we need to know that too, so.
You can, you can do it either way. I think acquiescence is fine for this to
So essentially, what we're doing with the issue is referring it to staff?
Staff.
Just to get an update.
Okay.
And we'll re-report back in a manager's
And then you'll report back on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Other commission items?
Can you, can you repeat what that last item was to bring back? I'm sorry.
The single-use plastic bags, we're just getting an update from where the Sustainability Advisory Board left off?
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, and
Go ahead.
I, I don't know if I should bring this up in the city manager's report, that's where you have the canopy, or if I should bring that, this up here in commission items that I'd like to eventually replace the canopy that is being torn down, 'cause it's in bad shape. So I don't know where you want me to put that.
I'll, I will ask the city manager if that
Why don't you let me go through the report?
Okay.
And then comment.
Okay.
I think that's good. Other commission items? Okay, I think we're on to the city manager's report.
So, I'm gonna make a comment before I get into all of these. I've seen a lot of email communications, in particular, about one issue. I wanna make clear that under the manager's report, these aren't, are not items for action that I want to make clear that, under the manager's report, these are not items for action at tonight's meeting. These are reports, and in most cases, these are status reports. The one thing I will say is, I'll say it when we get to the specific report that people express concerns with and give you some, hopefully, some guidance. In terms of the first report, I'm going to talk about is the traffic calming policy. And the traffic calming, this was just an update, status update. It was adopted by Resolution 6602, which was enacted thirteen years ago and is currently under review. Staff has been researching best management practice for safety and working on preliminary draft and new policy. The goal is to have the policy drafted this fall, and that the Transportation Commission would review it and make recommendations to the City Commission. The majority of citizens' concerns received relating to traffic and transportation reference risk for pedestrians and bicyclists. Traffic safety is often broken down into several components that are referred to as the E's. The three E's are universally used, are universally used, are education, engineering, and enforcement. Some additional E's are encouragement, evaluation, equity, and engagement. The current traffic calming budget and policy only address one E, and that is engineering. Using engineering to address all overall traffic safety concerns block by block is not a sustainable approach. The goal of the new traffic safety program would be to utilize engineering, education, enforcement, evaluation, and other relevant components to have a more holistic approach to traffic safety that can positively impact the community as a whole. I will tell you, not one of the E's is the solution to our problems. You're going to have to delve into all of them over time and consider them. So the next issue is an update on the Police Department Body-Worn Cameras. On September thirtieth of last year, a federal grant in the amount of $231,000 was received towards a body-worn camera policy and implementation program. City of Lawrence approved matching funds in the amount of $231,000. In late March of 2018, three members of the Lawrence Police Department, working on the Body Cam Project, attended a mandatory national body-worn camera conference in Washington, D.C., hosted by the Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance. Department members have also participated in numerous webinars and training sessions sponsored by the Bureau of Justice. We have to develop this policy, and it will require approval, but it requires a well-thought-out and comprehensive policy development process. The first policy draft was submitted in March of 2018 to the subject matter expert at justice for review and revision. Interviews have been held for the position of body-worn camera IT technician. Expected that we would hire somebody on July first. This was approved in the last year's budget for this year. To get to the, I guess, the important part, the full body-worn camera policy should be developed by December of 2018, by the end of this year. And a full implementation of the body-worn camera program is expected in 2019. And on to the issue that Leslie brought up, brought up canopies in the walkway. The canopy structure located in the alley between Eighth and Ninth Streets in Mass and Vermont. It was constructed over fifty years ago. The canopy needs major repairs. Currently, there are several locations where brick facades were attached to the canopy and are separating from the building. This separation has created a safety concern for pedestrians, particularly if the canopy were to fail and then fall over. Another safety concern is citizens climbing on the top of the canopy. The roof structure is not designed to hold additional loads. A heavy snow load could probably cause some damage. Current condition of the roof decking is rusted through in many locations, creating an even more unstable deck. The roof membrane itself has failed and, in some instances, is damaging the adjoining buildings. Additionally, the sidewalk has many areas that have heaved, settled, and, of course, balled out. There's also handicap ADA ramp concerns that exist in this area. The storm sewer below the sidewalk, under the canopy, needs replacement, and the canopy cannot remain in place to complete this work. So there's two issues that are kind of driving the demo of this. The cost to only remove the canopy without any other work is estimated $150,000. The cost to rebuild just the canopy and no other work was estimated to be an additional $400,000. I presume that means four hundred over the one fifty? So you're, it's four hundred separately?
Not, not including the new sidewalk?
Just for the canopy?
Just the canopy. So in August of 2017, property owners received the correspondence that described the work to be completed and the impact on their property. There's an expectation, by the way, that when you notify the property owner, the property owner would notify their tenant. Tenants change with some frequency. Our obligation legally is to notify the property owner. In December of 2017, an ordinance authorizing the issue of doubt was adopted. On May eighth, 2018, B.A. Green was awarded the project as part of the consent agenda. That was the demo award. Formal communication to notify all tenants, property owners of the upcoming project was sent by mail on May twenty-fourth after receiving some notification that others had not been notified. City staff, Westar, and Midco are working to complete a cost-share agreement for removal and replacement of the sidewalk. They have to be in there to upgrade, you know, when we're in there replacing stormlines, so we're trying to get them to participate in the cost of the walk. Each utility has work to be completed in this area and is beneficial for all parties to participate and coordinate efforts to limit the impact to the businesses. So I would suggest, at this point, if you wanted to comment, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm interested in replacing the canopy.
How do you want to pay for it?
I don't know. First of all, I have to see how other people want to do it.
I think, I think what we have to do is probably, whether it's this budget or a subsequent budget, this thing will, you know, if that's an issue the Commission wishes to concern, probably need to give us some direction to see how we would do that. It probably needs to compete with the other improvements in terms of improvement costs through a CIP process, so it wasn't contemplated this year. It was pretty much discussed, you know, as a part of our CIP, at least internally, and there, you know, it's like traffic calming projects. There's a lot in the queue, so we got to consider all that. And I understand that...
Whose budget would that be?
Pardon?
Whose budget would that be? And I ask, I mean, it would seem pretty obvious, Public Works, but ultimately, in that we treat downtown as a linear park. I know Parks and Rec covers a lot of that, though.
Well, I, I don't know. You know, you're talking about a sidewalk improvement with a canopy like that. I think you could have a special improvement district or a special assessment district to pay for that by the adjoining property owners. You know, the people that it's adjacent to are the ones that are going to want, you know, are going to be voicing the major concerns on it. You know, the truest way to find out how bad they want it is to see how much they're willing to pay for it.
Yeah.
So which year would this be in? Twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen? Because we're talking, we've already approved this project.
We've approved demo.
Right, we've approved demo and all this other, we haven't approved the sidewalk construction?
I'm hearing two people talking.
Have we approved the sidewalk construction?
That is, that is part of it. What we approved with B.A. Green is to take it down, fix the storm sewer, the sidewalk, and we're working with Westar, and do what repairs we need to do on the adjacent buildings when we, when we remove it.
And we're talking about doing this in mid-July of this year?
Right, and then...
So if we were going to build the canopy, we'd want to do it when we're doing the project, right?
Well...
It can be done after.
Oh, okay.
It's a standalone project.
Okay, that's good to know, because I didn't want to hold this up to...
No, I would not advise holding it up.
Okay, standalone project.
Or I would advise really holding it up.
Literally.
So it doesn't fall.
This work needs to be done regardless of the decision on the canopy.
Right, but what I'm hearing is that we could always go back in and do the canopy later if that was, well, great, okay, thank you.
Canopy is a good opportunity to add solar power to downtown as well. I know it's kind of in an awkward place, but you need to think bigger of what else the canopy can provide, instead of just seeing it as...
You have to get on the roofs, I think.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what else, but I'm just saying, yeah, think bigger.
Harden an alleyway.
Okay, well...
We've had some people waiting on this issue, so let me jump into that. The skydiving report, and just a reminder, this is an update. We've had a lot of inquiries about where we're at with this. The thing that seemed to attract the most ire was the application and some of the fees and all of that. We have all of that correspondence. And I talked to Chuck during the break and suggested that he needs to take that information back and evaluate that information and input it. He's already suggested some changes in that regard, so if you wish to entertain comments about that, go ahead, but understand that we've received the message. And actually, just having the status update probably gave us a heads up that people still have some concerns with these things, and so the staff has been directed to take a look at those, so just, you know.
Okay, so we could do public comment on this issue?
Yeah, I, it seems like there's some folks that we're here specifically for.
So public comment on the update on policies?
And it's just comment at this point.
Right, just comment. And the Commission will not be taking any action on anything on this tonight?
Hi, my name is Kevin Dice. I am a resident of Manhattan. I work at K-State, and I'm the president of the K-State Parachute Club. We operate out of Abilene, Kansas. I've jumped in numerous options in the state of Kansas, as well as, now I've added Wisconsin to my list of probably ten, I've got just under seven hundred jumps now, and I almost have a ten instructor rating, so. Also, I'm a senior parachuteer with the FAA, or certificated by the FAA, I don't know what. So first off, I'd like to express my thanks that, you know, we are making progress on this issue. However, there is some, some work left to do, so. One of the things that I find a little disappointing is the time scale that we're working on right now. While I agree with Commissioner Herbert, that, you know, just because we waited long enough, it's, it's, you shouldn't just go push something through. It's still, we'd like to see a little bit, a little bit more progress on this. So again, I'd like to extend my offer to help out with, you know, reviewing drafts and stuff. I've reached out, I think, five times in the last three months and not gotten a reply, except for Commissioner Herbert reassuring me, yes, I am, I too am interested in hearing the outcome of this. Although I had C.C., Mr. Solz, and a number of other people on this, so. One of the issues was night jumps. My club hosted night jumps in April. They went great. Everybody landed safe. I think we did four loads, about four jumpers apiece. And so looking at the policies now, they have come a long way. You know, night jumps are approved, provided they follow the laws set forth by FAA. But the current policy still kind of set up the city for a lawsuit as far as the, these user fees, you know, nobody else, you know, flight instruction does not have to register thirty days in advance, say, you know, these are the students that I'm going to be flight instructing. And, and so why should skydiving, you know, many of, many of our customers sign up less than thirty days in advance. Why should skydiving, to pay a fee per customer, provide their personal information, you know, we may not even have established that relationship with the customer yet, so how can we do that? We have variables such as weather. So planning, you know, thirty days ahead for, you know, manifesting an entire day's worth of jump operations is just kind of crazy to me. It's the softens for the moment, so realizing I'm out of time, but basically, we don't want to jerk around our customers and, you know, appreciate the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Other public comment?
For your time this evening. Hopefully, y'all read my email that I sent this afternoon, addressed to all of you concerning this particular issue, and specifically, the application as it is attached to this report. There's a number of issues with this. Number one, the application due thirty days in advance as a requested use date. And as it said in my email, how many other users currently on this airport or traveling to this airport are required to submit a request to use that airport thirty days in advance? And the answer to that is none. There is a liability insurance policy with waiver naming the City of Lawrence as an additional insured in the amount of a million dollars on the date of the requested jump. I believe that there is some misunderstanding as to the type of insurance coverage that is available. There is slip and fall policy that's available, and there's some. It covers the parking lot and an office space. And as soon as anything related to the act of skydiving is involved, there's no liability insurance for skydiving, okay? The number of jumpers in our group, that's fine if it's just me and Kevin and a couple of our friends, and we decide we want to get the airplane out and go make a jump. If I choose to allow myself, for example, to take Commissioner Herbert's significant other on a skydive, because that's what she wants to do, and maybe she wants to take her cousin and a couple of other people, I may or may not know exactly the number of people in that group, especially if it's being marketed as an opportunity for the community to engage in that activity, such as the open house at the airport, for example. There is a requirement in here for the USPA membership, rating, and license number of the people in the group. Again, if I take someone such as Commissioner Herbert's wife on a skydive, she's not a member of USPA. She has no USPA license, and she has no rating issued from the USPA. It also is a requirement for FAA third-class medical certificate and a USPA medical certificate. There is no such thing as a USPA medical certificate, and the FAA does not require a third-class medical for skydiving. The only reason there's a third-class medical requirement by anybody to conduct a skydive would be a tandem manufacturer for the instructor of a tandem parachute system. I happen to have a Class III medical. Mr. Dice over here has a Class III medical, because we are the professionals who routinely and regularly strap people to the front of us and make skydives with them. Copy of USPA insurance and policy number, okay? It's covered through our membership. Unfortunately, I get three minutes to discuss a tenure issue.
Thanks, Wes.
All right, the next issue on is the 2018 budget adjustments, and Brian's going to walk through those.
Thank you. I thought I would just go through one by one. Hopefully, it's not too time-consuming, but we, this came up with the last week where the Commission was interested in understanding what else is also going into the eighteen revised budget. Recall, we're going to give the presentation on July seventeenth to set the revised budget of eighteen, along with the 2019 budget, so it does make sense to make sure that everyone's up to date and up to speed on what the eighteen revised budgets are. The general fund is the one we've talked about quite a bit, in that at the end of 2017 actuals, we had a fund balance that brought our fund balance well over twenty-five percent, which is the percentage of fund balance that we've been aiming at. This transfer, in part, brings that debt back down to twenty-five percent. And that transfer's going into the Capital Reserve Fund, so that's what the difference is, mostly in the general fund. The Capital Improvement Reserve Fund, this primarily is the construction of Castled. We just didn't get to that project in 2017, and so as the project is starting and going to be spent completely in eighteen, it's basically us taking the numbers that were not, or the amounts that were not spent in seventeen and asking to revise that budget in order to make those expenditures. Similar, the Library Fund, they had a carryforward balance. Basically, it was over last year and a half of property taxes, higher than what we'd estimated. And so we'd like to be able to, as our policy's been the last couple of years, whatever comes in that fund, we turn around and rummage back out to the library. I will make a note, I do know the difference there is eighty thousand. The note in here was... The note in here was, that's before audit balances are known. There was an audit adjustment that the actual fund balance is $35,000. And I've talked to the library about this, and they, they're aware of that $35,000. The next, one, two, three, four, five are economic development funds. We adopted the budget last year with all of these funds combined, and so what this is doing, we, we're turning around and breaking all these funds individually. And so when we broke them apart individually as part of the original 18 budget, they were just kind of lumped in together. And you could see one of them, we were, we were way off on the New Hampshire ones. They were both combined in, and we just didn't allocate it properly by each fund. And so that's what these 18 revised budgets are doing, is allocating them to actually what they are. And Assistant Manager started last week, also mentioned that these funds are simply revenue coming in and revenue going back out based on our agreements, and so that's, that's simply what that is. The City Parks Memorial Fund, that $47,000 in part is, we received a grant for the Rotary Arboretum Shelter, and so this is allowing us to actually expend that grant in 2018 or a portion of that. And then water and sewer, there was, in the original water and sewer budget, there was, usually we transfer $1.5 million from water sewer fund into a, what we call a non-bonded construction sewer fund, which is also budgeted. Actually, the budget should have been $1.5 million, based on their, their rate model. For some reason, we got a little mixed up, and we only budgeted a million for that transfer, instead of the million and a half. And so that, in part, is the million and a half. And then the stormwater utility, there's just various projects. I couldn't really identify any major project or items that, that is having that go up. I will comment, of all these funds, we're not legally required to amend any of them, except for the library fund. However, as we've discussed before, we think for full transparency, recommendation is that we do, actually do a full hearing on all these funds, just to be able to answer any questions on that. So.
Questions from Brandon? Thank you.
No questions? All right. The 2017 CAFRA report, we did post that on Friday, so that you have that, so you have a little more time to go through that and review it.
Thank you.
And then on the 10th, we're, you know, we're combining now our future agenda meeting and our work session meetings. So right now, we have the mural that will be reviewed. I think on the historic district is next to review that project. We expect that to be on the 10th. That will be on the regular agenda. And then on the 10th, under work session, we have the budget, updated revenue projections, and then you can officially receive the report. And that's all I'm going to report out tonight.
Thank you. Let's go to calendar. Anybody have anything on calendar?
No.
Is Jennifer speaking to us?
Um, I don't know. Porter, is that Jennifer? Is that...
What about me?
Do you have anything for the calendar?
I did not have any items for the calendar. I want to thank everybody, though, for your patience with my poor internet connection.
Well, thank you for participating to the extent that you're able to, and we appreciate it. Look forward to seeing you again soon.
Yes.
Anything else on calendar?
Move, move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Herbert, second, from Vice Mayor Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.